All right, then I think we'll get started. Hello and good evening. My name is Pete Pecos. I'd like to welcome you to the Planning Board meeting for the town of Newbury for the 5th of August 2020. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to have some opening remarks that I'm going to read from a script, which helps us orchestrate and organize our meeting for this evening as we're in Zulu. So as a preliminary matter, this is Pete Pecos. I'm the chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Please permit you to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. George Morse.
Yes.
Larry Murphy.
Yes.
Leslie Matthews.
Yes.
Woody Knight.
Yes.
Mary Stone.
Yes.
Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor.
Yes.
Emily Noble.
Yes.
Anticipated speakers or presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Eva and Fred Jackman.
I don't see them here yet. They'll be here for, well, Chris may say, but they would be here for 68 Green Street.
Okay. Christopher York from Millennium Engineering.
I'm here, yes.
Great. William D. Francesco, owner applicant?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Bill Rubatelli from Motelli Electric.
Yes.
Thank you. John Colletino from Triple Cueing.
Yes.
Thank you. Bill Manuel of Wetlands and Land Management, Inc.
Bill might be joining us later. He has a conflict with a couple of the meetings, but Thad Barry will be on with us later.
Right, so Thad Barry of ASB Design Group, okay. So again, good evening. This is August 5th, 2020, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board and Newbury, no, just the Newbury Planning Board, consistent with Governor's Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, Governor's orders supersede the requirements for open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the Planning Board's section of the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join by going to http://zoom.us and enter meeting ID 832-7141-3056. That number again is 832-7141-3056, or by calling 929-2056099. That is 929-2056099, and entering the meeting ID number that was just discussed. Now for Zoom, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video or telephone conference. With regards to meeting materials, these were provided to the board prior to the meeting for review. Applicants and/or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. At that time, please state the intention after you have been called. So we have some ground rules for our meeting business. Before we can turn to our first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct for our business and to ensure accurate minutes. I, as the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of members inviting each member to provide any comment, question, or motion. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone. This would be done by star six to toggle to mute on your computer. You can use the mute button when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast can be captured by this recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor and you can state your name, address before speaking. I'm sorry, yes. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair and we will allow that to facilitate. With regards to public comments, there will be an opportunity for public commenting questions during our public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and ask a question as follows. I will seek questions and comments through our raise hand function for video participants on our conference. This function can be accessed by clipping, clicking on the participants option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. You would hover your cursor in this area. If you don't see it, a window will open and display it on the right. On the bottom of this participant area, you will see a list of own video participants and on that button, you will see the ability to click on the button to raise your hand. Please ensure your name is displayed. You may rename yourself by using more functions component next to your name. Please list your name, first and last name, your address for questions. Telephone participants can use their telephone keypads while on Zoom and raise their hand by hitting star. I will then allow questions and comments from the public that have hit the raise hand button in the order in which they are listed. The system will automatically keep track of who raised a hand first. Each participant will be called upon to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant participant or his or her representatives the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. The board will continue down the list of those who have raised their hand in the column and will afford participants and their reps an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical electronic submitted of questions or concerns, we read into the record and again, the participant application representatives will be afforded the opportunity to speak if issues have been raised. It should be noted that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call and vice chair will be kicking me under the table to remind me of that at all times. So, let's see. So we have public hearings that are going to start at 7:15, so we have about eight minutes before that. And I just want to let folks know that tonight, we're going to be having three public hearings. And what we're going to be doing, because we're operating in the Zoom format and we're appreciative of everyone's time in concentration capacities, not only to our board, but to our applicants and to the public, we're going to be limiting approximately 30 minutes to each public hearing. This will be as courtesy to, again, the applicants, the members of the public and board members. This will allow us to have a much more effective timed skilled meeting. We should not drag out many hours and I think we can get much more done in that that type of setting. This is something the board has decided upon. Okay, so I think that takes care of those opening remarks. Martha, did I miss anything?
No, I think you covered it all.
Well, that's a mouthful. You guys should try that. I mean, that's a long script to read. Okay, let's see. I'm going to look at our agenda. I see 7:09 for our time. And we don't have any submissions or appearances. Martha, do we have a July financial report?
We do have the July financial report. I think I may be able to screen share it if you would like to.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
It's pretty short. Just bear with me for a second. All right, can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. So can you make your screen larger?
I will try to do that. How's that?
That's perfect. Thank you. So I shall read this Planning Board financial report. Maybe it should be bigger. Payroll warrant, thank you. Payroll and invoice Roth I's payroll warrants for town planner and planning administrative for PR 21-1 for pay period ending 7/1/2020, for PR 21-02 for pay period ending 7/18/2020. Planning Board expense invoices Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad of 7/27/2020. And people may wonder why we have to do this, but this is a requirement of our meeting to document our financial report. Thank you for the screen share, Martha. All right, so we still have five minutes, so let me go back over here. Looking at our agenda, again, our public hearings will start at 7:15. Do we want to briefly touch on old business in five minutes, Martha?
I don't know. I mean, this is really kind of on here, not for substantive discussion tonight.
Okay, just to let us know that it is out there and lingering, and I think we all have received materials to be reviewed for that.
Right, so what I wanted to do tonight is just see, make sure that you all do take an opportunity to review the material. This is for the 217-221 High Road Preliminary Subdivision Plan. And so what I'd like to do is actually get the applicant and the applicant team in to discuss this with the board. So I thought for tonight, we could perhaps discuss when that could happen, because I did get an inquiry from them.
Okay.
And also see if there's any additional information that the board members would like to have so that the applicant team is prepared to provide that when we have the discussion about this preliminary plan.
So for the first question, as far as scheduling, what, how are we looking? Because we do have seven, seven, seven meetings or hearings going on, close to that?
Right, so right now, our next meeting is August 19th and we only have currently one public hearing scheduled for that day, which is the 105 High Road continuance. So it might be possible to, since this is not a hearing, but it will be, you know, it's kind of a substantive discussion. It might be possible to, to put it on that agenda and at least get it going.
So what I'm going to suggest is let's keep that on our radar screen and then by the end of our meeting tonight, let's come back and visit to see where that might fit in because we might need to continue something from tonight. We might shift it down to the 19th for time management sake. Does that sound like a good idea?
Sure, yeah, we can revisit and then we will have a discussion also about scheduling another public hearing for an application later, so we can discuss both.
Perfect, perfect. Do you want to touch briefly on town planners report in three minutes?
Um, there's not, not a whole lot to report right now. I think, I can't remember if I've told you all that town hall is going to be opening to the public by appointment only on September 8th. We remain closed to the public until that time. We will continue to try to meet remotely with people as much as possible and have them use the online services. But if somebody can't deal with us either via Zoom or by telephone or something, we will be setting up appointments. We'll meet with them in the hearing room, which can be sanitized beforehand and after. And, you know, just keep those contacts very controlled and limited and then continue to try to serve our residences as best we can under the circumstances.
Good news. And that'll start the September?
September 8th, so the day, the day after Labor Day.
Okay, great.
But meetings will continue in this format for the foreseeable future. Because there's no way, you know, there's really no way for us to be able to meet in the hearing room in person with public there and maintain the distancing requirements. The only other bit of news is we do have an application, I have one for review that Chris York provided to me for the parcel, K and R Construction, for the parcel that was carved out of the Newbury Cell Storage Site. So that's something that will be coming along as an application at some point.
Okay, very good. All right. Great. One brief thing from board members, is everyone comfortable with how we've been doing upboard meetings in this format? I'll just kind of, yes. George, yes. Larry?
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously not, you know, it'd all like to be meeting in person, but I think we're doing as well as we can with this format.
Leslie? You're muted, Les. Let me see if I can unmute you. Where are you?
I agree.
Yep, okay, great, great. Woody?
Yes. Yes, we get through it.
All right, Mary?
I think it's great that we're doing it.
Okay, good. You know, it definitely does have some limitations, but I think it's the best that we can do with the circumstances that we have. So I appreciate everyone's cooperation and managing the technology. Okay. With that, I am going to look this and I think we'll move into our public hearings at this point in time. And so we will again have three public hearings this evening that are going to be starting now at 7:15. They will follow one another. We're trying to do time allotments again of 30 minutes for public hearing. And we're going to start off first with a continued public hearing for definitive subdivision plan application for Farmview Lane, 68 Green Street map, R35 Lot 2, Owner Applicants, 68 Green Street Trust. Eva Jackman, trustee, this is continued from July 1st, 2020. And Chris, I think you're here to speak on this. Is that correct?
I am here.
Okay, why don't you bring us up to date with what we need to know? And do you need to screen share?
Yes, let me try and screen share.
Right, I've just made your computer the co-host.
I know that.
Wonderful. And if you can enlarge that a little bit, Chris, that would be helpful for these tired old eyes.
Okay, how is that?
That's helpful.
I can kind of center it a little bit.
Yeah, if you can bring it up a little bit.
I shall move, I will skip this sheet. I will go to the next sheet here quickly. All right, I'll zoom in a little bit here. How's that?
Okay.
Okay. I am Chris York with Millennium Engineering, representing Jackman's at 68 Green Street. We had a site walk about three, four weeks ago. I think it went pretty well. It was very helpful to everybody. After that site walk, the conservation agent and the wetland scientist been on site to finalize the wetland line. There's been a bit of confusion on that, so that has been finalized. This plan shows the official wetland line. Zoom in a little bit more. We located one extra isolated wetland down by the existing pond, the I-1 through I-4 series. You can see my mouse here, hopefully. Okay. So after, so upon that, we made some minor changes to the plans. You go to this grading plan. That's it. This plan's a little bit of a bigger scale, so this shows the new wetland line. It shows the isolated wetland that was located. We moved the constructed wetland down slope a little bit.
So I'm just going to be back up a little bit, folks, so that was in Lot 1 where the isolated oh, wetland was identified, because it's kind of hard to see the cursor, because it blends in.
Yeah, yeah, so it's at the southerly, southerly end of Lot 1, yep.
And I'm sorry, Chris, was, what was the other line that was changed? Was it the one on the?
It's the main line, the main line around the the, so it's the, basically it's the C line here, the C line and the X line.
Yep.
Actually, the line that was shown on the preliminary plan. There was some confusion and then it went back to this line officially, so. Basically, it's behind the stone wall. It's out here in the hay field. So with that, we moved the constructed wetland down slope a little bit. So it's all, so now it's entirely on Lot 1. We kind of cleaned up the plans a little bit, made it a little nicer for these future homeowners. So the constructed wetland was moved down a little bit. That allowed me to move the house on Lot 1 over about 25 feet to the north away from this existing house, neighbor's house. And also, the house on Lot Number 2. We moved about 50 feet further to the south. That was a concern with the neighbor here to the north on 4 Noise Lane, I believe. We moved that all 50 feet further to the south, so we have 150 feet from her house to this proposed house. And also, I emailed to Martha, the official soil logs that were done for the septic systems. There was some concern and some issues raised about when those were done. Someone had thought they were done in February or January, which isn't true. They were done in July and August of 2018. They were witnessed by Deb Rogers, the town health agent. They were done by a certified wetland, certified soil evaluator. And all three, all three, all three lots have official passing soil logs, the passing percolation rates. Those test bits are shown on the plans now as well. This is the one for Lot Number 1. And this is the heat field for Number 2, Lot Number 2. Lot Number 3, it's up here. Other than that, then not much has changed on the plan since then. I think we, you know, I think it cleansed it up a little bit. Like I said, the constructive elements all on Lot 1 before it was crossing over onto Lot 2. It kind of makes a cleaner plan. It gives these future homeowners more of a yard. That's about it. The other thing, one of the issues that came up at the meeting last time was the neighbor, 66 Green Street. It raised an concern about an electric line. You mentioned there was an easement to his property, which we can't find. We couldn't find any easement, but I talked to Fred last week and he had mentioned that there's an existing underground line that runs from the telephone pole at the entrance of our property ties into the barn. So when I talk with Fred, there's no intention of eliminating that electric line. If it's there now, it's going to stay. We're proposing a new underground line to tie in the three houses. Either this electric line will tie into our new line or it'll just stay where it is now. There's no intention of ever cutting out that electric line. That was the neighbor's concern, but if he's here, he can talk about it more if he needs to. I think that's it. We have a bunch of waivers to go through at some point and we can take any questions that you have.
Okay, I think what I'll start with, Martha, do you want to have any comments at this time so that you can help direct our board with discussion?
Well, I have one question and I will add a little bit of information to what Chris said about the soil test for the septic systems. So on that first, I did speak with our health, health agent today, Deb Rogers, and she confirmed that, you know, test pits were done at that time and they actually did quite a number of test pits on the site and these were about the only three locations that they actually found perks for. So they are, they are all valid and done in the timeframe that Chris said. One question that came up last time, and I don't know if it has changed this time, is there was a question about the run from the proposed house on Lot 1 over to the septic system. And I think it was kind of going under through the constructed wetland last time. And has there been any, any change to that?
Yeah, we haven't done any, no, no subject design's been done yet, but based on the new location of the constructed wetland.
Right, but just kind of conceptually.
Yeah, there's enough room between the edge of the contour line and the edge of the property line to fit a septic, to fit a pipe. It'll probably be a force main, right? Like probably a one or two inch pipe. There's enough room there to get up to that heat field.
Okay, and Deb did confirm also that no subject designs have been submitted for this. I guess one question that has come up is if these are the proposed fields, have you identified fields for reserve?
I believe the reserve areas would be inside, I believe they're going to be trench systems. I don't know much about septic anymore. I haven't done one in 20 years, but I believe they're going to be trench systems. Fred might be able to talk about this more. Trench systems and the reserve area is actually inside, in between the trenches, proposed, you know, the new trenches. Basically, the reserve area inside, inside the new field.
So you'll have to get Board of Health approval on those, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else, Martha?
No, I don't, I don't think so. As Chris mentioned, I think it would probably be inappropriate to go through the waiver requests and what the justifications are for those requests.
So that might be helpful if we do that now. And can we potentially screen share those?
Can zoom into the cover sheet, which shows the list. I can zoom way in on them. There we go. One more time. How's that? I can try and zoom in one more time.
I think one more time might help us.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, so Chris, why don't you go through each of, each of these waivers and please give us a good reasoning for the request of the waiver.
Okay, so the first one is Section 117-18A3, environmental analysis. The regulations say that any development of five lots or less, the requirement could be waived. That is rationale for that. I went through those regulations before. It talks about noise, talks about groundwater pollution, that kind of stuff. When, you know, with, there's no, you know, noise isn't a factor out here. It's three lots, residential groundwater. Any waste on water gets treated in the constructed wetland before it gets discharged. So any groundwater, there's no groundwater contamination. I think that's it, you know, noise, groundwater. So that's the rationale on that. Let me look at each one of them one at a time.
Yep, sure. Well, this was the second one. Sure, we have about 15 minutes left, yep.
The Section 4117-21D, that is playing here. So that says property lines at street intersections shall be rounded or cut back to provide free property line radius of not less than 30 feet. And on the southerly side of the road, we have a 15-foot radius. That's just, that's just for the property line itself, so that's, that's something you'd see out in the field. You're able to, you can't see, it's something that's just on the plan. We originally had zero there. We originally had the road kind of hugging the southerly side of the property a little bit, but based on the back and forth with Joe, the engineering comments, we wanted to put a sway on that side of the road, so we pushed the road back further to the north and that gave us enough room to get 15 feet. I can't get 30, because it's a weird, you can move up a little bit, just to kind of show the front of the property. Very narrow up front here. I just don't have any room to get a 30-foot radius. I get the 15, I get the 30, it's 30 on the northerly side, but 30 on the southerly side, it doesn't fit, so it's 15. Again, this is something graphically shown on a plan, something you can even see out in the field.
So number three?
Number three is Section 117-23B, cul-de-sac streets. It says cul-de-sac street, it'll be provided with a turnaround, having an outside sideline diameter, which is the right of way of at least 165 feet. An outside roadway diameter of at least 140 feet, the edge of pavement and the pavement width of 25 feet. We're proposing 110-foot property line diameter, 95-foot roadway diameter for the pavement and 25 feet of gravel. The reason for that is we're trying to keep this more natural look out there. It's a small subdivision, it's always pre-locked, obviously. It's the cul-de-sac's big enough for a fire truck to turn around. We don't, you know, it reduces the amount of runoff. It helps to kind of keep the site more rural. We don't need a humongous cul-de-sac out there for pre-locks. So then number four is a typical cross-section pavement. So basically, that's requires pavement. We're proposing, we're proposing gravel. I think we talked about it a little bit at the last hearing. Same rationale, trying to keep this more rural feel to this development out here on Green Street. It's, you know, let's reduce runoff a little bit. The main reason for that is just to kind of keep it a more rural feel, but it's only three lots, so it's very low traffic. Number five, the typical cross-section and sidewalks, bikeways. That is basically proposes a sidewalk on, you know, recommended or sidewalk on one side of the street. We're not proposing a sidewalk. There's enough sidewalks on Green Street. This is the three lot development. Tying a sidewalk to nothing doesn't seem to make any sense. Number six is fire protection. The proposed development is not within the two, which is the, we find the two areas here, section one seventeen dash thirty-one. It says in all areas which are not served by either the new report water department or the by-field water district. But which in the opinion of the fire chief, not adequate water supply and pressure falling applies, the applicant shall install a twenty thousand gallon underground storage tank. We're requesting a waiver on that just to do individual sprinklers in each home. That's something we talked with the fire chief back in, probably almost a year ago, and we were doing the preliminary subdivision. Now was that their request, one of these changes we did to the driveways and the road were done at the fire chief's request back, you know, like almost ten, eleven months ago. Okay. And then number seven is granite curbing, section one seventeen dash thirty-seven. We're proposing country drainage out there, swales on both sides of the road, no curbing. Better design allows for more infiltration of the water. Nice look. The number eight, one seventeen dash thirty-nine side slopes. Three to one side slopes are required. We're proposing two to one, just on the inside of the swales. Two to one slope is still mobile, walk on it, so it's you gotta get a little tight in a couple areas to match the grades, so we're showing two to one slopes. There, so that's it.
Those are our waivers. Okay, um, the only hot one might be the diameter of the cul-de-sac, Martha. Are there any concerns with that?
I talked to the fire chief today, actually. He has no concerns about it. I think especially, and this is, this is a waiver that, that the board has accepted or approved in the past, as long as the the turnaround is kept free of snow and any other impediments, they can just drive right across it and get a straight shot into some of the driveways. I will note also on number six, the fire protection, I had a discussion with him about that also. And in general, he would much prefer to get rid of the requirement for the water storage tanks or the cisterns and require sprinklering instead for areas that aren't served by a municipal or public water supply.
And that would be through the individual's own well, correct?
Yes, yeah. And I guess there's a tank that gets placed in the, in the basement that will provide the water for it.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Let me see if board members have any questions or concerns. So let me just run down our list. Larry, do you have any questions or concerns?
Not, not much. Just really a question for Martha on the, Martha, do you see any, or the staff, on comm, anybody see any issue with the waiver of the environmental analysis?
And I would say, and certainly it's something that's allowed under the bylaw to waive it for subdivisions with five or fewer dwelling units or lots. I think given the, given the size and the nature of this application, I don't particularly see an issue with it in storm waters being treated. So.
I mean, that's, that's my inclination, frankly, but thank you.
Thank you, Larry. George, do you have any questions, concerns, or comments?
No, I have no questions.
Thank you, George. Leslie, do you have any concerns, questions, or comments?
I just want to understand exactly what the French drain is. Is it underground trench that's crushed rock with a PVC pipe going through it for direct drainage?
What is this? So what is this for? I don't think, we're not proposing any.
The French.
I don't think we're proposing any French drains out there. We're proposing, we get the drain, we get the swales on the sides of the road, we got a couple catch basins to take the runoff to the constructed wetland. Twelve inch pipe, but we don't have any.
Okay, I, I just thought I heard you mention that, so I just wanted to ask.
It might have been the trenches with regards to the leach field. Yes, I think that's where the word sounded kind of similar.
Trench drain, trench drain, yes, trench drain.
Right.
Oh, trench drain, not French drain, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was doing what Leslie was doing.
Okay, Leslie, does that answer your questions, concerns?
My question.
Beautiful. Thank you. Woody, any questions, concerns, comments?
No, 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 I don't. I had a few questions earlier, but Martha answered most of them just now, so, nope, not this time.
Thank you, Woody. Mary, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
I heard what Leslie heard about French drains, and I thought they were water systems that go around the house to take away the excess water. So that's good, good, thanks.
Very good, very good. I'm pretty comfortable with what's been presented and the explanation for the waivers. Martha, do we have any other final questions on this? And I think we can, we can stop screen sharing at this time, if that's okay?
Um, I have one question. I apologize if I missed it. Are you doing roof infiltration?
We are not. The soils, soils out there are so poor for infiltration without proposing any.
Okay, so any roof runoff is being accounted for in your competition?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. I had one question on the road layout. For, I think it's lot three. It's right near the barn where the property, the roadway gets within two feet of the property line of sixty-six Green Street. And I'm just wondering, you know, that, that seems like an area that could become problematic. The part of the lot that's to the east of that could become neglected or whatever. I'm just wondering if there's any way of tweaking the road a little bit south to perhaps mitigate that a little bit.
Let me screen share again. Out in here.
A little away from that property line, Martha, that little apex.
Yeah, if it's possible. I mean, I know that you're keeping the right of way with actually what, what we have our requirement, which is fifty-three feet, which was designed actually to take into account sidewalks, the country drainage, street trees and that kind of stuff. We have no sidewalks here. This would be a waiver request to actually reduce the width of the right of way. I'm just wondering whether that would help anything. It just seems like a, an awkward situation that could be potentially avoided a little bit if, if the layout were tweaked. Now, I don't know if it bothers anybody else. If it doesn't, I will let go of it.
Yeah, it makes it a little awkward there. The whole, this whole front of the property is awkward. So I mean, the road itself is probably fifteen to twenty feet away from the property line. The road itself is plenty of distance, just the just the right of way line that's close to it.
Right, right. So you're going to have a right of way. I mean, this is going to be a private road. There will be a homeowners association presumably, which will be required to maintain the roadway. I'm just wondering, and again, this may just be me, whether there would be any, any, you know, potential for conflict with the owner of lot three trying to take, you know, take his mower and mow the park that's to the east of that or whatever.
Technically, that is part of lot three. This little triangle.
Yeah, no, I know the triangle is.
Yeah.
It's just two, you know, it narrows down to two feet between the rest of the lot in that triangle.
Yeah, I mean, it could I could talk to Fred about it. He's on here. We could, I could make it part of the right of way. Lot three has enough area on its own.
Yeah, you'd have to make sure that you have enough area.
Make the whole thing part of the right of way. We'd leave it as is. They can kind of get mowed as part of the someone who was in charge of mowing the swale could just mow this area while they're out there. It's still, there's a few trees out here too, so it's like a whole lot of area that's going to be grass, but you know, they could just mow it as part of the general maintenance of the swale.
Maybe a conversation to take place, Chris.
Okay, I mean, yeah, we can do that. I mean, hopefully, it's a minor change, and hopefully we can still get some decision tonight and hopefully amended as needed.
Martha, do we have any new comments that we've received either electronically or by mail?
Um, yes, we've got the communication that I had from the fire chief.
Right.
Which came in yesterday. Do you want me to read these or?
Um, I think board members have had an opportunity to review them, and the highlights, I think we've discussed.
Right, okay. And then we received an email from Ginny Thompson, a director butter on Monday, July sixth, which the board has received, and then the letter from Mary Doherty, which was received on July tenth. I did see Mary as one of the participants. I don't know if she would actually like to speak to this.
Okay, do we have any raised hands?
If you want to open it up to public comment.
Let me see if there's any other comments that we need to, from the board, or that you might have particulars. No? Okay, that being the case, then let's, if we could, we could probably stop our screen sharing, Chris. Okay. And I'd like to open this up for public comment, and I see, I see a hand with the name of Ray next to it.
Yeah, that's Director Butter, Ray Andrews.
Wonderful.
Hi, everyone. This is Ray. Can you, can you see me or hear me?
Sure, just give first name, last name, and address, Ray. Thanks.
Yes, Ray Andrews on that sixty-six green. I just wanted to comment on Chris's remark regarding that easement, that power easement. I did hear that there was no intent to remove that power line. That's good, that's the power line that services the barn. But the, but the easement is called out in the deed to the barn. I bought off the Jackmans. And I just want to be, you know, I just want to be clear. I don't want that easement to be extinguished in any way, shape, or form. Because the situation I want to avoid is that somewhere down the line, something goes to occur and that power gets cut off. And so whatever, you know, whatever happens with this subdivision, that power line that services the bars, services the barn is under that, you know, is under that roadway or that line. And if I get into a situation where that's not preserved in some way, shape, or form, then who knows what future lot owners might want to do that could cause problems for me not having the power anymore that, that I purchased off the, off the Jackmans.
So we want to make sure that your easement is memorialized in this process.
That, that's correct. That's correct. I want to make sure the easement that's in my deed is, is shown on these plans as I believe it should be. And Chris, I did hear you say you couldn't find it. I think if you, if you look back onto the, the transfer of the barn to my land, which was only about a year and a half ago now, it's in that deed.
Okay, I'll take a look. We took, yeah, I'll take a look again.
And feel free to reach out to me if you need to, because I do have a, you know, I have a copy of the deed in some place.
Okay, there's something you could forward to Martha?
I can send it to Martha, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate your, your participation, your comments. Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised. Martha, do you?
I don't.
Okay.
Double checking here. Yep.
All right, that being the case, what is this? I'm sorry, Woody?
I have a question. Martha pointed out the two-foot gap where the property of lot three only narrows down to two feet.
Yes.
Does lot three, I have a question. I guess it's for the engineer. Does lot three have to go to the road? Or in from Arthur or the engineer, anyone that can answer that.
Let me.
From where it's only two feet wide there to the road, that, that triangle, or kind of triangle adjacent to the house of sixty-six. Does that, does that have to go to the road? As lot, lot three, or can it die somewhere at the corner of the barn, the two-foot mark?
And as far as a frontage requirement, Woody?
Yeah.
Well, maybe we have, we have more than enough frontage up to that corner. I mean, technically, it could, it totally could die at that corner.
Do you have enough area for lot three without it?
I am pretty sure. Let me just yeah, we're at fifty-seven thousand five eighty-three. We need forty thousand. So, yeah, we got more than enough.
Because that, that, I, I agree with Martha's point, but it would, it would solve a lot of problems in the future with maybe the three homeowners and people mowing and if it was, if that fell under part of the association of the three homes with the driveway, that would there wouldn't be problems in the future, any problems. Stable problems, because otherwise they, you know, that could, that could become a problem for someone in one of the other two lots.
So is it the request of the board to basically stop lot three at that point? And then, you know, then the triangle would become part of the right of way? That the preference sounds like?
That's kind of interesting.
I think, sorry, I think it would be cleaner. It would look cleaner for sure. If that was all part of the road as opposed to being lot three at all. But that's my opinion.
Okay. Is Fred and Eva on here? Are they listening in?
Yes. Yeah, where are you?
Okay. Are you okay with that?
I think we needed, we needed the square footage there for the area of lot three. That's why we had to keep it that way. Otherwise, it cuts the square footage down on lot three.
Yeah, I think lot three has more than enough square footage already. We're at fifty-seven thousand.
We wanted, we wanted sixty-five thousand. We wanted sixty-five thousand. That was the way it was to start with. And if it's changed, it's, it got beyond me. It went beyond me. But it should be sixty-five thousand square feet on lot three. And that's why it was done that way.
Well, it's fifty-seven, five eighty-three right now.
Yeah, that's what it says.
Been that way for a while.
Either way, there's still enough square footage there, right, in lot three?
Yeah, yeah.
It's enough square footage for a single-family house, which is, you know, all you need is forty thousand square feet with thirty-two thousand square feet of contiguous upland.
Is what being, is being proposed as a single-family house, is that, was something other than that? We should bump it up to sixty thousand square feet, Fred? Is that what the issue was?
What, what, what we tried to do to start with, was have that, that lot at sixty-five thousand square feet. And, and if we lost square footage down the line, I can't really read that plan, and I don't have a plan in front of me, but as far as I was understanding, that was going to be sixty-five thousand square feet. That's why we needed that extra footage, square footage down to Green Street.
It's only fifty-seven.
Now, it's only fifty-seven? Well.
Fred, Fred, Fred.
I don't know how we lost them at ten thousand square feet, but.
Fred, it was sixty-five thousand before we gave away that parcel X. That parcel X up here is eight thousand that you did it off. That's where the sixty-five thousand.
That was all in the figure to start with. It was all in the figure to start with on the preliminary plan.
Yep, so the preliminary plan probably showed sixty-five thousand.
The way it is, is the way I see it right now, what is, is, and if we have to give up that, we give it up, you know, and we make that part of the association, or maybe sell it to Ray.
Okay, this wasn't designed to stir up the pot too much. It was trying to make it easier so that we wouldn't have people fighting over lawn mowing space with two-foot components, and I don't want to really create disharmony with that. Martha, which, which, which way should we? create disharmony with that. Martha, which, what, what, which way should we sail this, at this point in time?
Um, well, I, I, I guess. I'm not quite sure what the reason for the original sixty-five thousand was, because even, even with that, it's, it would not be large enough to support anything other than a single family home, because there's no municipal water here. You'd need eighty thousand square feet for that. So, I mean, obviously, it's up to the, the, the property owners. It's just, it was just a suggestion to try to clean things up a little bit and make it maybe a little bit clearer about who, who will be responsible.
Responsible, right. Okay. Board members, any comments or questions? I just want to try to keep our time factor in consideration.
Yeah, actually, just a couple of, if I may, um, I, I think as part of the approval process, we do need to approve the homeowners association. So I don't think we've seen any of that paperwork yet, have we?
No, we haven't.
Okay. And, oh, go ahead, Martha, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I think there, there are a number of documents that we actually need. Homeowners Association is one of them.
Uh, and we also had some discussion about screening for abutters, uh, you know, vegetative screening, and, and, uh, I don't know where we are on that.
Roll over.
Do we have any proposals for that?
I think with lot number three, or in a lot number two, with moving this house over fifty more feet, we're about a hundred and fifty feet away from house on Noise Lane. I, I don't think there's any need for screening over there. There's already a pretty thick tree line existing. So I don't think there's the need for one over there. I think Fred, I don't want to speak for him, he's here, but I think he's amenable to some sort of screening, uh, if needed, over here on lot one. I can let him speak to that a little bit more, but, um, that's more open. There's no trees over there, but I think as needed, he's amenable to something for those neighbors.
I think, I think a lot of that, uh, is going to be picked up with the landscaping. Uh, there's going to be a landscape architect for the lots. And I think a lot of that will be picked up then, but no, we're not against putting any screening up, arboretum, something of that sort.
Larry, a couple more questions?
Uh, no, that's all I have been helping.
Thank you. Um, anyone else from the board with any other questions, wrapping up this discussion?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. I see Ray has raised his hand, so let's just kind of redirect this, just so we can wrap up our public comment.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Peter. Uh, Jack, you, you do some type of screening? Yeah, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Jack, if you do do some type of screening, at one point, you had mentioned putting something, uh, some, some arboretum, but, excuse me, by the barn there. You know, my only concern is having three small kids, uh, you know, just don't want them running over into that, into that, um, you know, into that new road. So I don't, you know, I don't know what, um, heavy traffic or construction vehicles be going through. But if you, if you are popping a few trees in, and you would put some down there, but those property lines are so close, just to keep, uh, you know, to keep, um, help keep foot traffic from running from my property over to your property, or over to the, over to the roadway really is the concern.
Yeah, Ray, uh, there'll be construction fence along your whole side, uh, the orange construction fence, uh, to keep people out so that kids can't wander back and forth. And it also keeps a nice tidy job, because it doesn't let the job blow over into other, other parts. It keeps it nice and clean.
So if I, I think what Ray's asking for is something long-term, uh, long-term planting, is that what I'm picking up, Ray?
Well, my, my most immediate concern is not having the kids run over there. They like watching the heavy machinery and stuff. There's stuff going through on that road. But by, yeah, privacy, particularly if, you know, particularly just could have a close that, that, that road is to the land, uh, so that people don't drive up and have a clear view into, into my backyard.
Appreciate you talking. And as far as arboretum, you know, we're going to plant arboretum up on that side.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, um, so we can probably stop our screen sharing, if that's okay?
Okay.
Thank you. And, uh, board members comfortable enough at this point in time to close the public comment on this?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Leslie said yes, and Mary? Oh, I think Mary's muted. Eric, where'd you go?
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, great. Um, all right, Martha, any other housekeeping things?
Uh, no, I think as Larry pointed out, probably one of the biggest missing items really is the documentation to go along with the homeowners association.
Um, so I think at this time, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
Close it or continue it?
I, I'm not, I'm sorry, to continue it, we do need some, uh, uh, additional supplement, um, documentations to conclude this.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, by way of clarification, when you said, when you asked if we were comfortable closing the, the, uh, public input, I assumed you meant just for tonight, not?
Just for tonight, just for tonight, yes, yeah.
I guess the only other question I would have, um, does the, do the board members feel that they might be able to give a sense on the waivers of which, any or which might be acceptable, or do you want to consider, consider that and discuss next time?
Um, I, I'd love to do a quick little straw poll, and if you could do it timely, um, I'm just going to ask Larry if he has any concerns with any of the waivers or explanations.
No, I don't at this point, based on what we have today.
Very good. George, do you have any concerns or questions on the waivers? You're comfortable, okay. Um, Leslie, do you have any questions, concerns, or are you comfortable?
Oh, I'm very comfortable with everything.
Okay, Woody, any questions or concerns? Are you comfortable?
I'm comfortable with all but the, the pavement, uh, no pavement waiver, uh, I think um, uh, gravel road with three different houses, houses using it will have to be, have some maintenance every year, but other than that, that's the rest of the waivers I'm comfortable with. The, uh, it would be cleaner condo association with pavement to the cul-de-sac, but that's all my only point.
It's a good point that it would be, you know, an expense and something that the homeowners association is going to have to stay on top of.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Mary, and where are you with this as far as?
I have no issues with the waivers.
Okay. Okay, I'm comfortable as well.
Can I ask a question quickly? It can, can the homeowners association docs be a condition of approval? I think we're pretty much, I think we're pretty, you know, I think we're pretty good here with the plans and everything. But, yeah, but is that a condition of approval that can be done?
Larry, what's your thought on that?
Well, I, I think it's, um, part of the approval process, is it not? I mean, what, what do we?
Or just a condition till we don't have to continue the public hearing again. Obviously, they got to file them at some point before they build.
But, but if, if we have any issues with them, then we're going to have to have a public hearing on them.
Right, and I think, um, and it just, I'm sorry, I just had a thought that went out of my head. And we also haven't talked about the form of security performance, you know, whether it's performance bond, tripartite agreement, uh, what, what's proposed for that? You know, or putting a covenant on the lots and releasing them. So I, I think there, you know, some sort of administrative things that still need to be dealt with.
And they have to be part of the decision.
Right, and in general, I would, I would recommend against closing the public hearing until we have a draft of the decision, in case there's any dialogue that needs to happen with the applicant.
So it sounds like those components could be filtered to you, Martha, and then circulated to the board?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, discuss this time. No, I don't know whether I don't know whether there would i- if, if there's a sense that this is going in the right direction, we can at least start a draft of a decision. But that would be up to you, or wait until we get the, the documents.
Right, so Chris, I think you're getting close to the finish line. Uh, so, yep, so what I've heard from, uh, my vice chair is he'd like to have the, uh, homeowners association documents completed. Uh, you have some administrative stuff to work out with Martha. Um, and I think once those are kind of compiled and reviewed and then brought back to the board, the board can then, um, uh, help you with crossing the finish line. In the interim, um, I think Martha, we could probably consider drafting up some parameters for decision. This.
Okay.
So, any other questions from board members? I would, wonderful. I would like to, uh, hear a motion so that we can continue this and help get this, uh, where it needs to be. I'm going to just check our calendar for our, our potential follow-up. Was the eighteenth, nineteenth of possibility?
Um, and currently, the only, we only have one public hearing, for the nineteenth.
Uh, Chris, would that give you enough time to get your documents in place and?
Probably more on, probably more on Fred's end on that one. I'd have to.
Okay, well then, Fred, would you like to come back to us in two weeks, or would you like to come back to us in four weeks?
No, two weeks would be fine.
Okay, so I, you, you, you have to have all those documents kind of probably two months or within a week, so that'll give her an opportunity.
I understand that.
Okay, to, to go over them, and then to get to the board, so the board members have, uh, four or five days to just kind of chew over them and take a look at them, and so that when we meet in two weeks, we'll have enough time to digest all, you'll have had time to digest that material. Okay, that being the case, would we'd like to, uh, continue this public hearing to the nineteenth of August?
At seven fifteen?
That would be perfect. Is there a motion?
I move we continue the public hearing until, or August nineteenth, uh, meeting at seven fifteen.
Great, do I hear a second?
Second.
All righty, um, uh, any discussion on the motion? I don't see any discussion, so roll call vote, uh, Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Chair is in favor as well. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, continuing on our agenda, we have a continued concurrent, uh, public hearing for Newbury Self-Storage Expansion, uh, one thirty-one Newbury Port Turnpike map, R thirty-six parcels, twenty-three, twenty-four owner applicant, uh, Stovey Storage, Newbury LLC, doing business as Newbury Self-Storage, William D. Francesco manager. Uh, this is continued from July first, twenty twenty. This is a site plan review application and a special permit application.
Okay, I can start again.
All right.
All right, for your work with Millennium Engineering, um, so again, we had a sidewalk a few weeks ago on the site. I think it went pretty well again. If I can screen share. Martha had requested, I put together a little plan that shows kind of the site overview. So it chose the existing site, all the existing buildings, and then we show the proposed ones out back, kind of showing it on the entire lot. I was kind of, just kind of keep that up for a minute. Other than, no, no plan changes. Obviously, the lighting is still kind of the main issue. I can zoom in on lighting plan that we submitted, you know, about a month or so ago, just kind of quickly go through it again. But the main concern was, you know, one of the main concerns was lighting, uh, the amount of light at the edge of the site, uh, so kind of just kind of scroll throughout the site here. We get zero point zeros based on the lighting plan done by the electrician. We got zero point zero, zero point ones off the edge of the pavement, the edge of the wetlands on. These are, we'll zoom out just a little bit so you know where you are. This is the last, the last existing building is here on the left side of the screen. The first proposed building. So that zero point one, zero point zeros. That zero point ones in the constructed wetlands. The, the wetland line is way out back here. We show no lighting at all out back there. Zero, zero point ones, can scroll around the back of the site. Then, again, zero point one, you know, zero point two at the edge of the pavement. And then so on. So that was one of the main concerns at the first meeting was no spilling of light into the wetlands. So we've done that. We don't show, we don't have any spill over white into the, the existing bordering vegetated wetlands. And we have just enough light getting to the edge of the pavement. Probably would like a little bit more for safety, safety reasons, but we've trying to keep it down to a minimum. We get, you know, zero point one, zero point twos at the edge of pavement. I think I can probably pass it to Bill Robitaille to kind of go over the lighting a little bit more. Just kind of discuss what we had talked about with the sidewalk and what measures we're going to do to make the, the lighting better out front, you know, the pole lights especially, and get, and get the main issue right now is the pole lights. I don't think the wall bonded lights are, are pretty dim. They don't, I don't think they spill any light at all. They're just lighting up in between the buildings to allow for the cameras to see any activity at night. Um, it's a safety concern, so I will pass it over to Bill and let him take it from here. I can share any screen you need me to, Bill.
Yeah, all right. So as we talked the last time, um, I talked about the lights out at the road, uh, it was brought up that when you're, when you're heading southbound, that you, you can see the, the, uh, the large floodlight. That light shines straight out, goes left and right. So what I suggested was is that we would put a, um, a piece of, we'll have a piece of metal bent, painted bronze, and we'll put it on the left-hand side of that fixture so that it, when you're coming, you won't get that bright spot on Route One. And we would, we could also do the same thing if we feel necessary, uh, on the wood, on the, uh, wetland side by putting in, as we drive down on the right-hand side of that driveway, we could put the same bent piece of metal on the right-hand side of the fixture. And we can, and, and I'll do it at night so that we can, we can almost tr- scale it right into where that line's going to go. So that would be, you know.
Adjust the heads.
And we're going to adjust the heads so that we could control it the best that we can. I don't believe we have a stock, die sky, die, dock, sky compliance that we need to main mandate anyways, but I think by doing this, it's going to, it's going to take care of, uh, phase one that's already approved, and we're not going to use any of those lights in the next phase.
Um, anything else to present for the board for this evening?
That would be fine with me.
All right, all right. So, uh, first I'll start with staff. Martha, do you have any, um, comments on concerns or what, what has been presented?
Um, I, I guess my, my one concern still is that I, I think that to the degree that it's possible, it's helpful to keep all the light on the pavement and avoid any spill over uh, off the pavement and to any of the, uh, basically unimproved or unconstructed areas. And I'm just wondering whether it would be possible to look at another type of wall pack, one that has a cutoff, that's shielded and has a cutoff as opposed to the ones that are on the building and the fixture that was provided, which, you know, basically has, um, shines out and to the sides.
Well, the wall packs, I'm sorry, but well, the wall packs on the buildings, they do shine down. They go out twenty feet left and right. I think the issues of the, uh, the, the pole lights are the ones that are throwing all the light every which way.
I think it's really a combination of both. I mean, the pole lights, um, because, partly because of the way they're, they're directed and they're not shielded, do, there's glare directly into, into the eyes of drivers, but I think it's also a concern about the overall brightness of the site. But I think it's also a concern about the overall brightness of the site, that light. It has to do partly with the, you know, the 5,000 K LEDs, but also the fact that the wall packs do shine out and to the sides instead of really shining, shining down and illuminating the doors at the units itself themselves. And I understand that there is a security concern. But I'm, I'm just asking whether there's a possibility of looking at a different kind of wall pack that has more of a cutoff. So you're getting less light. Coming off the site.
We actually use the same light up in, up in Kingston, which is dark sky compliance. And in Brentwood, most of New Hampshire has this dark sky. And we have no problem up there with this, with the wall packs. I mean, you, the light is, it's an LED light. It's designed to shine down. It does, I'm looking out there now. It's not lit above the light. It's shooting out. It's, it's, that light is designed at eight feet to shoot out 20 feet and 20 feet left to right. And I have the fixtures at 40 feet apart. This really, I mean, it's doing the job it's supposed to do. And whether it's a five, five K or a four K or a three K, that's just changing the color of the light. For the white light for, for the cameras. Three K is more a living room light.
I guess my question is, do they really need to shine out 20 feet and to the left and right? Or can they be more focused on the, you know, on, on the doors and just bring the lighting closer, closer to the buildings? And again, this is just me. I'm speaking for myself. And the board members need to.
I understand that, but we got 40 feet of wall, of road space between, you know, to the next building. And when you drive around the side, I don't know how much you have over there. There's over 20 feet.
Yeah, it's more, much more.
Much more.
It's 30.
30 feet. So it's.
And I think there had also been some discussion about possibly eliminating the lights on the short ends of the buildings. I find maybe misremembering that.
I think, I think we lowered them. There was a lot more spillover into the wetlands and off the edge of pavement. We did lower them. I think they were 10 or 12 feet before, another eight. We, we, we want to keep some, we want to keep some light at the edge of pavement. We don't want zero. We could point to mostly point one. You know, we have zero in some spots. We really do want a little bit of light at the edge of pavement for safety reasons. We don't have any, we don't have any spillover into the wetlands. And I know that's important, the topic that was brought up before.
So I, I just want to ask a question because I've, I'm hearing the, the term and I, and I just want clarification. Please don't think this, you know, being fresh, if you will. But when we say safety, what do we mean safety, safety concerns?
Talking to me or?
It's, it's a term that's been used and I just want to know what that, I want to quantify what that means.
Well, I, if you're asking me, I would say I want to be able to see where I'm going. So I mean, I don't think if you're at the edge of the wetland, that's really helping, that one point's really helping the camera that much.
So is it, I mean, I can now, again, I'm just playing this out. When most people arrive, they're going to drive in. And so they're going to have headlights on and all of our new cars have these bigger LED lights that like light up a football field. And so as people are, are coming and going, their cars are going to be on and their lights are going to be on. So they're going to be illuminating, creating light and scatter in all sorts of directions. And I think about Martha's question, do we need to go 20, you know, do we need to go beyond, you know, we have 40 feet. Do we need to go 20 feet? We have 10 feet, 10 feet. We have car lights. Car light's going to be illuminated and think if anything, they're going to be screened up. Your security cameras when they pop on because it's going to mess up what they can see and can't see. And so I'm just, you know, just trying to tone, if we can, pull it in, tone it down. Because I don't see anybody walking to the edge of the pavement and then falling into the abyss of a wetlands.
You know, what, what people do is when they come here and most of the units that I'm building, the new ones are going to be larger units. And when people come in, in, in many instances, the, the, the thing that they need is in the back of the unit. And they have to take everything out of the unit and they stack it all in the parking area until they find what they're looking for. And then they repack the unit. A lot of these units are packed up tight right to the doors. So they use it as a staging area.
You use in between the buildings as a staging area?
Yes, and the ends of the buildings. And we just had a big U-Haul truck pull in and they were on the end of one of the buildings putting, you know, unloading into the building.
So it's for safety of situations where people are loading and unloading at night.
Correct. And so the cameras can work.
Mr. Kim, and if I have asked, could I ask a question?
Sure. Let me, um, let me shoot down, let me go kind of, Larry, do you have any questions?
No, we're not at this point.
Beautiful. George, do you have any questions?
Yeah. The only point I would make is that this is just not safety, it's safety and security. If I were in there at night, I would love a lot of light around to make sure I'm safe and secure.
Thank you. Leslie, please.
Um, I agree with the safety situation, but instead of illuminating every part of the storage facility, could it be put on more of a motion detector that lights up the area that is being used at a particular time?
I think that would look like a lot of strobe lights at night, which would probably be more harmful to the wildlife than. Cause I own some warehouses and we have this lighting end that the light turns off in the warehouse, but as you walk down the hallway, all the lights pop on one by one and then they go off and it's very strobe lady.
Anything else, Leslie?
No, thank you.
Woody, Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, I don't have any particular questions. I, I find it very bright there, but I also find the times when I notice that it's very bright there. It's, there's moisture in the sky, whether it's snow or rain or fog. I find you can see the facility from far away, whether it be Middle Road, Newman Road, uh, not, not even particularly Boston Road, but further, further away from there. And that's usually when there's moisture in the air and it's from that white light. But I don't really have any questions. Cause I do understand that it's for safety and, and security. So no questions, but that, that's my comment.
So what do you just brought something up and Bill, I didn't think of this. Bill R., is there a certain, a balance factor with moisture in the air? And well, there is with fog because we noticed that when we drive with our headlights, right? We'll illuminate differently. Will that be the case with snow and rain as well?
I think what we need to do is, is it, it keeps coming back to the pole lights. I think we need to try to tip them down a little bit more. This is phase one I'm talking about.
Okay, you're right. Yep.
You know, tip them down a little bit, tweak them, you know, put, put the, the metal, the bent metal, you know, on route one to stop the southbound side. And then, and then just kind of tweak it a little bit, but you know, the light's the light. I mean, there's only so much we're going to be able to do with it. I mean, we're going to, he needs the light there. He should have some of them out back. I mean, them, them lights I'm putting on them back buildings is not going to go. It's going to shoot out 20 feet when, and he's going to have parking out past there. So, but he said he doesn't want to put any more lights on. So we're going to go with just the wall packs in this phase.
Appreciate that. Okay. Thank you. Mary, did you have any questions or comments or concerns?
Just an overarching issue about the lighting. It's bothered me from the beginning. I think it's too bright there. I don't have an answer for you technically. I don't have any way to explain why, how it will be better, but I know that the public is concerned about the, um, the heat and the amount of light that emanates from this, um, this site. And I've never understood why it is necessary to be as bright as it is, even given all of your explanations about safety, et cetera. Um, I just don't get it. But you know, that's, that doesn't help. So, but I think I speak for some people in the community who have mentioned this many times, about the lighting being too bright. If there's a solution, great. If there isn't, then.
Thank you, Mary. I think we can stop screen sharing. Thank you very much. I don't see any other questions from any board members. Do we have any public individuals that have questions or comments? I don't see anything out there. Do you, Martha?
Mike Jaffe is raising his hand and I get an email from him, which I forwarded on to all of you a little after five.
Great. Mike, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, I continue to have the same concerns as I voiced.
Excuse me. Yeah, just your name and your address, please. Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mike Jaffe, 8 Ross Lane, Newbury.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes.
Good to go?
Good to go.
Okay. So I continue to have the same concerns as I've expressed at the previous two meetings. Um, and same as what Leslie just voiced, the, the, the facility is too bright. It is the poster child for light pollution. Um, I did some calculations earlier today, which is what I forwarded over to Martha. You've got 200,000 lumens to illuminate approximately two acres of space, not including the buildings in the new facility. That is a minimum of double what any environmentally responsible lighting engineer would stipulate for a facility of this size. In addition, the wall packs are all partially shielded. They're not fully shielded. Those lights should be up above the level of the shield. And the light should be deflected and diffused downward and out, not up. These will go up and cause the sky to glow, just like the phase one of the facility, um, like it does right now, that everyone can see from a distance when you're driving down the road. It's too bright. Um, 5,000 K, yes, that is the temperature of the light and it is an ugly light that is unenvironmentally sensitive. It's disruptive to wildlife and it's disruptive to the animals around there. And a 3,000 K light is a much more of a natural light. It's more of a candle light. It's much more pleasing light. And it is specified by anybody who pays attention to dark sky regulations and dark sky environmental concerns. Um, and it's a better light. This facility is way too bright and it should be scaled back by at least half and it would still be bright and it would still be safe and it would still, I think, be easy for people to see. And I think that it would be safe and secure. And it, and this probably should be reviewed by a third-party engineer that has experience with this. Now, this isn't a by right project. I think the board has discretion in dictating the lighting requirements. There are no dark sky requirements in Newbury. That's true. But in order for a project like this to be approved, the board has a lot more discretion than a project that's being done by right. And I would ask that they take into account all of these things, which I put in writing earlier today. And I mean, I know the developer that does a nice job. It's a beautiful stealth storage facility. It's maintained really well. And, and you know, that, you, you can tell that he cares. But I think that, I don't think he's being advised well because there's just more light than's necessary. And this, this is just going to continue to make a bad situation worse if approved as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate your comments and your input. Thank you. Martha, do you see anyone else who was from the public that wants to make comments?
No, I'm not seeing anyone. Okay.
Great. So going forward, Martha, do we have any housekeeping components to take care of?
Well, I guess the one consideration is whether, whether this would be the time to review the site plan review criteria. And go for, or.
It would be helpful because at least that way people understand the parameters of what we're dealing with. Can you screen share that by chance? Or do you want me to try to?
If you can, I don't, I don't have it. It would take me a minute to pull it up.
Let me see if I can find it. Cause it was in that very nice document that you gave us that was SKLM. And that was midway through that packet, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Folks, stick with me. I'm just going to look through things here. Unfortunately, I'm not screen sharing this because you'd be dizzy. Cause I'm just flying through some things. So Larry, I'm going to let you drive for a couple of minutes while I find this.
Okay. What would you like me to do? I have the decision criteria here. If you agree.
I think I have it right here. I'm just going to pop it up for folks. So we can all have it. Can everyone see that?
There we go. Yep.
Martha, am I, am I at the correct starting place?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. So we can see that we have our decision criteria in front of us. The planning board shall approve an application for site plan review. It defines that the applicant has submitted sufficient information for which can be determined that the proposed project will, A, minimize the volume and cut and fill. Number two, the number of removed trees of six inches or larger. Number three, the lot area of wetland vegetation displaced. Number four, soil erosion. Number five, threat of air and water pollution and traffic congestion. Number six, I'm sorry, number five, number six is traffic. Uh, then we go to B, which is to avoid removal of existing stone walls. And where is required minimize the length of removal. Next would be provide adequate stormwater management and other utilities consistent with requirements of Newbury Stormwater Bylaws and the Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations. Uh, next we have minimize, I'm sorry, maximize safety for pedestrians and vehicles both onsite and entering and onto and egressing from it. Next, we have provide adequate access to each structure for fire and emergency services. F is minimize obstruction of scenic views from public accessible location. G is minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage and other outdoor service areas viewed from the public ways or permissible residential use or zone. H is minimize intrusion of glare from headlights and sight lighting on surrounding properties. I is, I'm going to make sure my eyes are working here, minimize unreasonable departure from the character materials and scale of buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and places. J is prevention of contamination of groundwater from any sources. K is enhance the appearance of the property to the greatest degree possible by means of landscaping and other site amenities. L is minimize impacts of the use of adjacent properties through regulation hours of operation, deliveries, noise, rubbish removal and onsite storage. M is ensure compliance with provisions of Newbury's zoning bylaws, including parking and signs notwithstanding above regulations of uses. Instructions referenced in general law, chapter 40, a exemption from zoning shall be limited to the extents allowed under said section of the general law. So those are the parameters that we need to consider in this situation. And the one that seems to kind of jump out at me is H, which is minimize intrusion of glare from headlights and sight lighting on surrounding properties. So at this point, I'll ask board members if they have any comments or concerns on our, our guidance. Larry?
Well, I agree with you on that leaps out to Pete is H. What troubles me is that we don't have any standards in place. And we're sort of trying to back into some here. And I, I'm frankly, just a little bit not sure how to proceed at this point.
Yeah, let me ask George if he has some insight. George? Let me see if we lost this audio.
I'm sorry. I had muted myself. Yes. H raises a question, but there are no really close surrounding properties that would be affected. I think most of those are. I think most of those are, there's one across the street, and that's about it. Where any people, anybody is living, and there are surrounding properties with buildings. So that sort of takes it out the table, I think. I think that bothers me less than I might imagine. Okay.
Okay, thank you, George. Leslie?
Um, for the people that live across the street, if they haven't made any kind of complaint at this point in time, I don't see that, you know, that's going to be a problem for them. And most of the lighting is to the back. But if it could be taken down from a five to even a four to minimize the high intensity of the light, it might be more people, it might be better for everybody concerned who seems to be having a problem with the lighting.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Woody?
I, I pretty much already said what I wanted to, but it's when there's moisture in the air that I noticed this facility, and I see it from Newman Road, and I see it from Middle Road. I go, whoa, what is that? You know, when there's bush, fog, snow, rain in the air. I don't, we, I don't know what we can do as far as reducing whether it's a 5K or 3K light. I know, so I know I'm annoyed with all the newer vehicles and their bright white lights driving towards them. And I did, that's what this is, is white light. So that's basically my comment. Is that it's white light, and you can see it from a distance, especially when there's moisture in the air. And I don't, I don't know what, what you do about it, really. I don't know if it's something for, like, like the gentleman from Ross Lane said, outside. Are you to review it, or if it's something that we just try to reduce the lighting? I don't know. I don't know what to do. That's all.
Thank you, Woody. Mary, do you have any thoughts on our, kind of our guidelines here?
Same old, same old. It's a beautiful facility. It's very nicely done. The lighting needs to be addressed for the benefit of the neighbors and the community. I think a third party coming in and evaluating and possibly giving us some ideas about what could be done would be helpful to me.
Thank you. Yeah, I am a little bit stuck on H. I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to figure the language. I'm trying to think of our responsibility. It says minimize intrusion of glare from headlights and sight lighting on surrounding properties. Now, it doesn't say residences. It says properties. So properties can, I think, have significant interpretation of what encompasses the properties and what encompasses the wildlife and what encompasses our flyways. And we have, you know, we have a lot of that's my timer to remind me that it's thirty minutes. Back to the bone. You know, what impacts we have outside of the parameters. And Woody brings up some really significant points, because it is true. Things do change in fog and rain and snow, and we do have a lot of that stuff. I don't wanna don't want to not allow this to go forward, but I'm trying to figure out the path to get us there. Bill, Bill R. So you can see where we're kind of stumbling into something, because this is, will have, I think, an effect. And Bill, Francesco, I want to echo something that's been said. You've done a fantastic job with the development and with keeping the place immaculate, spotless, professional. It looks wonderful for a storage facility. It's beautiful. It really is. But I think we're finding we're going to be coming kind of into, because we are a rural, rural community, and we probably will be looking at some sort of dark sky approach. And how do we, how do we bring things down? And Bill R., I appreciate your desire and want to try to modify the large poles that are facing Route One. I think that's a great thing to do, and I think we need to figure out those mechanics to make that happen. And thank you for opting to do that. Is there a way that we can somehow start to tone down the backend lighting? Because is less intensity a possibility? Is different spacing of lighting, is still providing for security, and still providing for what the concerns are without having as large a degree of light scatter when we have rain, when we have snow, when we have fog?
Well, I still think the, I think the wall packs of the buildings, fine. I think we're, it's these light poles are the issue. In changing the lights to 4K or 3K, that means buying a new light fixture. That would be like astronomical cost for something that he already has, okay, he's already been okayed for. So the light fixtures that are on the poles, those are 90 watt fixtures. I believe that I can take that fixture, and there's three sections to it. I could probably cut the top section, shut that off, and bring it down to a 60, 60 watt. That would take the top light off. And then just run the two, the two sections instead of the three. And then just turn them and down. I mean, it's gotta be light. I mean, whether, I think if I had 3K lights out there, and it was yellow light all out there, you know, you've seen parking lots that have yellow light. You can't tell the color of your car. You know, I just think the white light, people are just gonna have to get used to white light. I mean, that's, it's everything we put in is LEDs. So you know, I could look into doing that. I think we could do that. But this is all stuff that's already on phase one that we're attacking. And to change the last phase to a softer light, I think that's not going to really help. It's out in the middle of nowhere out there. And in the land, and the light that he's shining on is still his land. I mean, you know, it's not like he's bothering property owners out there. If we can cut it off of Route One and just keep the, get it out of the wetland, you know, I think that's where we're at.
Thank you, Bill. Martha, any comments or thoughts?
No, I basically said my thoughts. I still think it would be, you know, potentially worth looking at a different kind of wall pack for phase two. I'm not suggesting changing out phase one. I mean, that's, that's approved. That's in place. But whether there could be any consideration for looking at something a more shielded fixture for phase two.
We can do that. I mean, we'll do that.
We can look at a different fixture. Once again, my concern is just what I'm selling here is safety and security. And I want to be able to make sure that whatever fixture we use, that my cameras will work with it, and that when the police drive through here at night, that, you know, they can see where they're going and just general.
Well, we change the fixture in phase three or four, or whatever it is. It's just going to be a different color light. I mean, you know, you're gonna have this color light, and then we're gonna drop down to a different color.
No, I think Martha, Martha, what kind of fixture are you looking for?
I was thinking of a cutoff fixture, fixture, one that is, you know, shielded, so that there is no, that it's, it's just more focused without, I mean, the ones that are there now are shining, you know, shining out, shining to the sides. A cutoff fixture would be focusing.
Martha, the problem is we're only at eight feet high, though. That's the problem. It's, we have those on the front building here, because the building's a lot taller. It's, the higher you go up, the farther it will shine out.
Right, understood, understood. Is there any ability to raise them for the new buildings?
Only in a 12-foot building.
No, it's, it's ten-foot ceiling heights, but underneath the gutter.
You're at eight feet.
Maybe at nine, if you're lucky.
Yeah.
Can you get a light that shines out 20 feet?
There's not a lot of way going on there.
No, not really. We're not gonna put any more pole lights up out there. I think it'll make a big difference.
Appreciate that. Okay. What is the feeling of the board at this point in time? Larry, where would you like to steer this?
Well, again, I just, I mean, we have a lot of information, and I do believe that the bill is trying to do the right thing here. I just don't feel I have the expertise to evaluate all of this, to be honest with you. And at the same time, I mean, if we had a standard in place, it might be justified in asking for peer review, but we don't have that standard in place. I certainly don't, I think we would be justified, other than perhaps shielding the pole lights, asking for any major changes to what's already been approved. And I'm not in favor of that. It seems to me it comes down to whether or not those 5K lights are appropriate, or if the 3K lights could work on the, on the new sections. And from what I'm hearing, there's some concern as to whether or not the cameras could adequately work with the 3K light. Is that correct?
Well, it's more of a yellow light. It's not gonna show colors as good, you know, on your cars. It's, it will, it will do the job, I imagine, but it's just, I'm wondering how it's gonna look when you have, you know, it's sort of like at your house, if you've got 100 watt light bulb, and then you've got that 40 watt one next to it. I mean, I just don't know. I wonder if it's gonna make more of like a dirty look to the, to the property, like it's just dull.
What about a four, what, what would a 4,000 look like?
Well, it would be more, it's natural light. So we could, you know, if it's gonna make this thing go through, we'll put a 4,000 light up there and make it work. You know, it's gonna be the same pattern. It's gonna throw the same light. It's just not as bright. You know, you have, you have soft light, and then you have, you know, daylight, you know, a natural light. So it would be more of a natural light, a 4KW will be. So if you are willing to do that, I mean, go to a 4K, it's, we can do it in the same.
Bill, I have an idea.
Yeah.
When we do, when we do our nighttime thing, where we get up in the bucket, and you're doing your shielding and stuff, is it possible for you to put a 5K light just somewhere in a building, a 4K light next to it, you know, 10 feet away? So the people can actually visualize what that looks like, get their comfort zones, and see if that makes sense, see if it would work for you, both bills, as far as look light?
Well, I would, I almost think that it would just go with a 4K light in the back section and try to get this thing through. He's got to get this through to get these buildings audited. You know, so it's like, if we're gonna wait another month, it's gonna just prolong. I mean, I would rather just give up and go to the 4KW, make it happen, and live with it.
And that would provide enough lighting for safety concerns?
It's gonna have to. It's gonna still.
No, I'm asking you. Would it?
The color, yes, yes. It's just gonna change the color from the front half. But it's so far back, it doesn't really, you know, think about it. We're almost back to the dump pretty soon.
Well, yeah, no one's gonna see it from Route One.
No. You're only gonna see it when the, when the leaves fall off the trees, you're gonna see these buildings. That's when everybody sees the buildings. Once the leaves are back on, you drive down the dump road, you know, whatever. Same as if I held a flashlight out there in the winter, you're gonna see the light. So I would say we'll go to a 4K. We'll have it, we'll have it designed by Rablighten. And, and make sure we come in with all the, you know, we won't be off the, off the roadway. What would that? It's gotta make something happen here.
Martha, from a standpoint of any administrative components, is that an issue with what's been presented in the application?
I guess, I guess my question would be whether, whether the board would feel, you know, comfortable starting a draft of a decision with, I mean, the sense that I got was that there are no concerns about meeting the other decision criteria. Is that correct?
I think everyone's of that mindset. I think H was our sticking point. So if we started the draft, I think that would be a good direction to go in. And Bill, we proceed along with what your suggestion is of, you know, going to get this, you know, across where we need to get it across, going with 4K, and let's get our shielding going with our, our, our phase one component, which we appreciate the modification. I think that's, that's a wonderful offer to do that. I think we're going in the right direction. Bill D. Francesco, you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I'm just gonna check with my security camera guy. Make sure that, you know, that I can capture a license plate or a face with 4K light. I, they make these cameras so high-tech now, and they're so high-definition that I think it's probably gonna be fine, but I'm just gonna make a phone call tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Yes, George?
Yeah, I have a question. Bill, perhaps ought to also check with the company's liability insurance carrier to make sure they don't have some particular need for light level. I don't know if they have any particular lighting requirements or not, but it's worth a check.
That's a good idea.
George, I love the way you think.
There, I know there are certain standards for certain facilities, whether it's an industrial building, a shopping mall, or a self-storage place. So I'll make that phone call.
Okay, great. Thank you, George. Appreciate. Anyone else? Okay. Martha, I think we can probably start with the process of drafting up some decisions. Do you need any direction from us?
I guess the only one would be whether there are any particular conditions that the board might want to. Speaking of lighting.
Make sure that you don't go in the dark, right? Any particular concerns or conditions? I'll kind of do our, one by one count. Larry?
Other than what we've talked about with the lighting, no, I don't see anything.
George?
None.
Okay, great. Thank you. Leslie?
No.
Okay, Woody?
No, none other than the lighting. It's a beautiful facility. That's what's there now.
Mary?
Just the lighting. That's it. Otherwise, good to go.
All right, Martha, I'm on the same page. We want to wrap this up on the 19?
Yeah, get a decision and then we draft a decision and review it.
All right. So I'd like to probably kind of continue this to the 19th, so that we can bring it to the finish line. Is there a motion?
You want it for 7:15, Martha?
Yeah, I think we're all, we're all just gonna schedule them for 7:15 and run them consecutively as we're doing.
All right, I would move to continue the public hearing until August 19th, at 7:15 PM.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Is there a second? There is a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Mary, how do you feel?
Yes, indeed.
Already in the chairs in favor. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you very much, Bill times two. And Chris, thank you very much, guys. Appreciate your help and okay, great. We have our final hearing for the evening. Let me get my agenda back. And that is going to be continued concurrent public hearing. 108 Main Street map, R, you, I'm sorry, map U-11, lot 1A, and off Main Street map, R-41, lot 56, owner applicant, triple Q, John Coltoni. Excuse me, Vice President. This is continued from the first of July 2020. This is a definitive subdivision plan application for Coltoni Crossing, 108 Main Street, and a common driveway special permit application for common driveways serving two lots proposed, Coltoni Drive, Crossing 108 Main. John, you have our attention on our floor. John, you have our attention on our floor.
Good evening, John Coltoni, Triple Q Inc., the applicant. I also have Thad Berry, our engineer, with me tonight. Bill Manier, our wetlands expert, has a conflict with three other boards, so it will be Thad and I leading the way. Bill usually does the computer work on regard to sharing and stuff, so I'm going to do the best I can with that. So I apologize if I'm a little bit slower than what he normally is. So just a quick review. 5L subdivision, as you know, can I share the screen? Is that all right?
Oh, so you should be able to.
Okay. Everyone see that okay?
Can you make it a little bit larger for our, what happens is smaller on our screen than your screen.
Let's see.
Magnification, is that the top right corner?
Yeah, I was just trying that.
Way over in your, on your bar, you know, on your, on your right side of your screen. Keep going over to the right and up to the top there. Keep going up. Is that a little, nope, down a little bit, and I see a little magnifying glass. Is that right, Martha?
Actually, it's blocked by my photos of everybody here, so.
So I see it. Hey, there you go. Well, that minimized it.
The pictures are covering everything. Let me see if I can.
You can move the pictures if you just hold your mouse on them.
Anything bad?
No.
You work?
Did that go a little bit bigger?
Can you see?
I don't think so. Folks, can we work at that? Or does anybody have their paper versions handy?
I have my paper version here.
Okay.
It's the same as what we were given on the sidewalk, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I can read off mine.
Well, I'll leave that up. I apologize. We've tried everything that we have here.
We understand, John.
So 5L subdivision. I think everyone knows it pretty well. There's been a lot of things that have been completed over the last few weeks, thanks to Martha and the planning board, and we want to give a big thank you. You know, we've had a tech sidewalk, we've had a planning board sidewalk, we've had a conservation sidewalk. We've had two or three correspondences with peer review, which seems to be, you know, at an end. With now, we have in writing and feedback from the highway department and the fire department. So there's been quite a bit completed. So it seems like we're winding down a little bit. With the chair's permission, I'd like to try to take one topic at a time. And it seems like the length of the road was kind of a few questions at our last public hearing with the board. So I'd like to start off with that, if that's okay. So as you know, the length of the road that we're asking for is a waiver. We're at about 810 feet for the length of the road. And by your bylaws of 117-8 waivers, the board may waive strict compliance with any of these regulations if it deems it in the public interest and if written record and kept of such waivers and the reasons for them. While the written records, I think, is, is a given, but I'd like to talk a little bit about in the public interest. So when this thing began, as I've explained in the past, we bought this land from the town in an auction. And the town took 108 Main, which is the connector piece to land off of Main. And they did that so it could be packaged, packaged as some type of subdivision. Obviously, there's not enough room on 108 Main to really build anything. It was purposely packaged to connect the two, so the land could be sold for some real value. So in the public interest, the town, with doing that, which I think was very smart, received almost $300,000 in their coffers, which definitely, in our opinion, is a public interest. Obviously, with five brand-new homes that would be owner-occupied, increases the tax base. That would be public interest. People who buy these homes potentially could add to the community. Could be the next chairman of the planning board or conservation, or members of the boards, volunteer for nonprofits, et cetera. So they can add to the community. But most important in any project, no matter what board you're in front of, is public safety. So there's been plenty of projects that I've been involved in that sometimes you have to sacrifice for public safety, because that's the most important. You never want to build something, especially when your family's name's on it, and have something happen in the future because of a public safety problem. So the fire department, we met with from the very beginning, and told us what they wanted done. We've done that. Now we have a letter back from them in writing, which sort of tells exactly what we've been saying the whole time. Fire chief and Keith over there, the fire department, have been great. And whenever you can add such a quality of life to a community that this subdivision would, with five high-end homes, that adds to the public interest. And it's safe. It's, it's completely safe. There's no, no risk of that. So when you can do something like that to add the quality of life of the community, and also have it blessed, for lack of better terms, from the other departments, that, that, that's a huge plus. So that's our reasoning on the 117-8 part on the waivers, that you can do a waiver if it deems it in the public interest. So again, with permission of the chair, before I move on to our next subject, I wasn't sure if maybe you want to zoom in on that for any questions, or if you want me to keep going, whatever, whatever you think's best.
I would say just keep going, John.
Okay, thank you. The next subject that we wanted to take on, that seemed to be a lot of questions, was the common driveway. And from day one, we thought the common driveway was a huge plus in the way to do this subdivision. For a few reasons, as we've mentioned before. Our goal in this subdivision was to keep undisturbed the natural beauty of the woods. The least amount of affecting the wetlands as, as possible. By doing the common driveway, we're only having one crossing. Instead of two, be able to ask for this, we had to show that we could do five driveways. We've shown that, and doing five driveways, a lot more woods would be taken down. So we definitely think that the common driveway is the way to go. Obviously, we go back to public safety now. So we, I think we're all waiting for the fire department to, to give their concern here. And as we explained before, from our meeting with the fire department from way back, before we even submitted anything, was they wanted the common driveway part 20 feet wide, which is, is. The chief mentioned that in his email letter, so that's been taken care of. The other thing, as we tried to explain before, maybe we didn't do as good of a job, and the chief has helped us with his letter, is when you come up this driveway, you can see my cursor, if a fire truck had to pull up here, they want to be able to back down like this, turn, and go. And this is designed to do that, which I'll show in another attachment in a second, that they'll take the largest fire truck that Byfield Newbury has, and this is designed to be able to handle that in either direction. Then the other thing, and I'll show it in a second too, that the chief asked in his letter, that this is designed to be able to handle the weight of their largest truck, which it was designed that way from, from the very beginning. And we'll, we'll show you an attachment on that. So with the chief's feedback, we feel that that sort of ends, in our opinion, the common driveway situation. The other thing that he mentioned in his letter is you would have to provide a T or a Y for a fire truck to be able to turn around in any driveway if the driveway was 250 feet or more. None of our driveways are 250 feet or more. So he wanted the driveways to be at least 12 feet wide. I believe all our driveways are 14 feet wide, which is not even something that the chief asked for. It's something that we just had on the plan originally. So it's actually a little wider than what it has to be and what he requested. If you give me a second, I'm going to try to. So here's our aerial view with five driveways. And you can see that this fifth driveway here, instead of doing the common here, we lose a lot. We're going to have another crossing over the wetlands, and we're going to lose a lot of woods. So this is what our plan is that we're proposing. The other thing that I did not mention is this connector piece, which we call 108 Main, is over 300 feet. Let's say 300 feet. This is under 500 feet. In public interest as well, now with the new design that we did, we are now making the drainage of Main Street, I believe, meaning what we would call the 100-year storm, which it doesn't now, which again, is in the public interest, because now we're correcting that with, with the street. So back to the, to the common driveway, all the driveways are under 250 feet. The common piece here is built and structured to, to hold the largest fire truck and the weight of it with no problem. I'm going to go to our fire truck. I'm going to have Thad just explain this a little bit, because it's computerized to show the turnarounds at the largest truck that Newbury has. So I'll, I'll let Thad explain the cul-de-sac and the common driveway.
The first, the first turning movement, and I will admit on the screen, it's kind of difficult to see, is we basically using auto turn, which is a very conservative method in analyzing a fire truck movement on pavement. We met with the fire department, we got the dimensions of their truck. You actually put those dimensions into auto turn, you can actually create the truck moving down the roadway driveway or anywhere you want to. And as you can see, when the truck comes down the cul-de-sac, there's ample room in that cul-de-sac for that truck to go around and stay within the pavement. It's, as you can see, it's just, there's ample, ample room. The truck can also then turn down and go into the common driveway and head up towards Lot 4, then back into the driveway of Lot 5, and then drive out forward. Just as a note with all of this, meeting with the fire chief, we also, on the common driveway, we, he wanted signage at the beginning of the driveway, saying that this is a common drive. And then as you go up to the T or the split, he wants signage there as well, which we're showing, saying this is Lot, this is number 44, Colin Tony Way, or number 43, Colin Tony Way. We also positioned lighting exactly where he wanted it, to illuminate the common driveway in the, in the lighting at where the driveway split. The hydrants at the end of the cul-de-sac was specifically placed between the common driveway and the driveway for Lot 3, which is exactly where they wanted it, and they wanted a light near that hydrant. Then they requested a hydrant in the middle of our roadway at the bend, in between lots 1 and 2, and they wanted a light there. They also asked us if we could also place a hydrant at the very beginning of our roadway entrance. And even though it's no benefit to us, we said that we would do it. So all of those items, the fact that the fire truck is easy movement up, up and around the common driveway in the, in the cul-de-sac itself, it, it makes it for, for, for a safe road.
And then.
This is just a typical Shea four-sided box cover. And all of these are designed for H20 loading. H20 loading is highway traffic loading that can take tractor trailers, cement trucks, fire trucks. This is just, this is just a standard. It's just a standard design, a standard structural design that they can easily handle H20 loading traffic, traffic.
And this is what the original design was of, of the 20-foot common driveway and the crossing, to be able to, you know, just show, we wanted to show this to no problem handling the fire truck. All right. So that sort of is what we wanted to say about the common driveway, what we wanted to say about the length of the road, because those seem to be a couple major points in past public hearings. Now we'd like to address the highway department. So Jim, you know, has been very helpful and concerned, and he's the one that came up with the idea of, you know, moving the manholes so they're easily taken care of on the street side and stuff like that, and we accommodated all that. Obviously, by the email that he sent, and we totally respect his opinion, other towns are having the same problem. He doesn't mind taking care of the normal street situation that he would, any street in, in Newbury that he does as a public street. But he's concerned about taking care of the BMPs and stuff. So what we would suggest to the board that we would do is we will have an HOA that the five houses will pay for and maintain and take care of those BMPs, et cetera. So the town of Newbury does not have to take care of those at all. They only have to take care of what, as in his email, Jim stated, they wouldn't have a problem taking care of, because they do that on a regular basis with any other town streets. So, you know, we respect his concern, and he doesn't want to, it, it's great that he's upfront about that. Some towns will take it on, and then it becomes a problem for the town later. So it's, it's better to be addressed now, and we completely understand. And that's how we would, you know, handle that, and I think takes care of the, the problem. When it goes to the Perry viewer, Joe Swanka, appreciate all his time. I think he gave us three, you know, responses. And on his third response that we received on Monday of this week, dated July 23rd, it seems like we've addressed all his concerns, and there doesn't seem to be anything more to do, you know, with that situation. So I know, I know it's late. You guys already had two public hearings. I'll be quiet now with the chair's permission and see if there's anything that we've forgotten to cover, that the board would like to have us cover, and whatever questions there may be, whatever we can do.
Um, I think we all have paper versions in front of us, so we can probably stop the screen sharing. Thanks very much. Appreciate that. And so I'm first going to start off with Martha. Concerns as to where, what's been presented. Want to take one at a time? We can do them as they were presented.
I'm just looking, looking at their original list of waivers. So that included the property line minimum radius, the length of the cul-de-sac, the outside diameter of the cul-de-sac, drainage pipe minimum diameter to be 12-inch RCP, and the waiver for environmental drainage pipe minimum diameter to be 12 inch RCP and the waiver for environmental analysis. So I don't know if there are any, any others.
Those are the five that are listed on our. Is that correct? Those are the only five waivers that there are, John?
Yes, the ones that are on the plan. Yes, sir.
Okay, so they are location and alignment. As folks can see, general layout and dimension, maximum length of cul-de-sac, layout and dimensions, cul-de-sac diameter. Martha indicated the drainage pipe minimum and environmental waiver analysis. Do we want to start with? Martha, do you have anything that you want to say other than what the waivers are?
No, I just wanted to make sure that they, they all got covered tonight. And I will say that I think as far as the common driveway is concerned, since the purpose and intent of the common driveway from, from my point of view is to preserve natural resources. And I think as, as John has said, that does seem to be a more environmentally sensitive solution than having five separate driveways there because it does eliminate one wetland crossing. The width of it at 14 feet actually exceeds our bylaw requirement, which is 16 feet. I mean, the width of it at 20 exceeds the 16 that we require under our bylaw. And the chief does seem to be comfortable with it. I talked with him.
So from a common driveway, you know, you're, you're comfortable with the common driveway approach. Fire. Then I'm going to move over to Larry. Do you want to start with any questions, concerns, comments?
Just, just talk about the cul-de-sac length again, which I think is kind of the, the big one in my mind. I'm not quite sure I'm following your argument about the town packaging this. And I, I mean, I understand what happened. I don't think anybody's questioning that, that you can subdivide here. I guess the big question is, I mean, if you pulled that cul-de-sac back to right where you come off of 108 Main, I, my layman's eye, it seems to me you can probably get several lots there. And so one would, you know, question would be, why is it more in the public interest to extend it and have these, these five lots rather than taking three or four, however many lots you could get if, if reduced width? And could it be an issue of, of public safety and ease in reaching the building sites? I don't know. That's what I'm kind of groping for. I am. So that's, that's one comment. Secondly, I do agree with Martha as far as the common driveway goes. I think it makes the most sense. And lastly, I, I'm glad you raised the issue of a homeowners association because my inclination at this point is to think that there ought to be a condition on any approval that the roadway remain a private way. I think it's going to be a problematic, it's going to be a real problem for the town to maintain this. And even if you, if you concede that the BMPs would be, you know, would need a homeowners association for maintenance. If that maintenance isn't, you know, isn't, isn't maintained properly, isn't done properly, then it's the town that's going to have to deal with the, the impact it has on the roadway. So my, my inclination at this point is, is that this ought to have a condition that it remains a private way. And I welcome any comments you have to any of that.
Would you like me to respond here? Or you want me to wait for other questions?
Wait for the chair.
Oh yeah, go ahead, go ahead, John. I mean, these are the questions Larry's asking.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. So on the length of the road and how is that in the public interest? The way it was packaged, as I've explained many a times, there's no houses that can be built without that 108 being connected. And the town did that. That length is over 300 feet. No one is going to build unless it's financially viable to build. And because that road is so long to get to that, it's more of a cost than it would normally be. Like for instance, if we could keep the road at 500 feet from the start of Main Street, then I'd be with you. Only doing three or four houses then would probably make it worth it. But when you're going to go 300 over 300 feet before you can even start to really build, it makes it very difficult. Now, the key whenever we do a project is public safety. So if the fire department or some department came back and said, hey, having this 810 feet long is dangerous and here's why, then that's a different story. Shame, shame on us. Shame on my team. But that, that's not the case here. The chief, before we even submitted anything to the board or to the town, told us what to do and would have no problem with it. We also had two or three roundtable discussions before we submitted anything to the board and we actually wanted to do six lots. The problem with the six lots, as you might remember, is the 32,000 square foot continuous upland. And we were told about that after the fact. Our fault too, we should have known it. And it got changed to five lots. So we felt very comfortable with this 810 feet from day one because no one that plays a role in public safety or from the planning department had an issue with it. We also met with conservation back then, with Doug when he was there. And he liked the common driveway idea. He liked the length. There was no issues. So we've gone many months now and longer than what we should, not the board's fault with the coronavirus, with this design. I, I, I think it should have been shared with us a lot sooner if there was going to be a problem there. Or if the fire chief came back and said, hey, I have a problem with the length, then that's a different story and that's not what's happened. We have listed a number of, in the public interest that, you know, in our opinion, makes a big, makes a big difference for the town. You know, having it a condition as a homeowner association, if that's something that we have to live with, then we'll live with it. I, I, I would rather have it, what I call, I might say this wrong, a homeowners association for it taking care of all the BMPs and the stuff that the town normally doesn't take care of on a public street. But we've had Jim at the site. We've talked to Jim a number of times. You saw what Jim put in writing. And even when Jim put it in writing, he doesn't have a problem taking care of the things on the street that are normally taken care of. He has a problem taking care of the BMPs, et cetera, which we respect. So that's why we'd make that an HOA and have no problem as that condition. And the highway department didn't have any problems with the length of it. So sometimes it's a matter of, of agreeing to disagree. I, I could list off 100. I might be exaggerating. I'm sorry. I could list off many, many town streets and private streets in Newbury that go over the 500 foot. And I'll just use one example because I, a town example, I would never want to use a neighborhood as an example, but Kent way, where all the town offices are, is a situation where it's over the 500. So I'm not going to beat a dead horse. That, that's our opinion and I, I hope the answer to the question. Sometimes it's just a matter of agree to disagree.
I just want to, no, I'm sorry, Larry, go ahead. Do you have? Okay. George, do you want to pipe in with anything?
As long as the fire chief is happy, I'm not concerned about having a combined driveway. And apparently he's been over it enough to make sure he is happy. As far as the length of the cul-de-sac, that's another issue. It may be that the, I don't think we can shorten it obviously, but it really has to be taken into consideration of what it will be to take care of it from the town. The town takes it as a public road. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair, could you just, it was very hard to hear him. Could you repeat?
George, 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 do you want to say it again?
Yeah, basically I have no problem with the common driveway as long as the chief is happy with it, which he seems to be. As far as the length of the cul-de-sac as a waiver, there's not much changing on the plans at this point. They'd have to revise everything. And yet at the time, it's supposed to take it as a private way or public way. That's a concern for me and it may be for the board. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Leslie.
I think the idea of doing the shared driveway makes a lot of sense in two ways. It protects vegetation and habitat. And it also seems to be a much safer way for emergency vehicles to maneuver in and out of either one of those addresses. As far as the making it a private way, my thoughts are if, if the town is going to supply emergency vehicles in and out of there, then they should be able to supply like snow, you know, plowing in the winter and things of that nature. That's, that's about how I feel about it.
Thanks, Leslie. Woody, what would you like to say or what questions do you have?
The common driveways, a smart idea as far as leaving that swath of woods and not having too wetland rust. I understand the argument of the town putting this package together with the 108 address and that's 300 feet of road that you can't really build anything on. So I'm not sure how I feel at this point in time about the length of the cul-de-sac. We have a bylaw that says that the cul-de-sac can only be 500 feet, correct? So that's.
Does have discretion to, to weigh that.
So I'm not quite sure how I feel entirely on that rate at this moment. But I do feel that we don't need to put the burden of plowing and maintaining the, maintaining the wetland area out front on the town. That's just my feeling. We're adding another road to their roots and if we do that and there's, there's public water there, fire hydrants and you know, people can dig them out that live there or they could have the homeowners association take the fire hydrants out and follow the road for public safety. It's not a, it's not a through way is my thought on, on the burden to the town for maintaining this road. So that's, that's all that I see that I could think of at the moment.
Thank you, Woody. Mary?
I like the common driveway idea. Makes a lot of sense.
Anything else?
No.
A couple of things I'll say. I think that Martha has articulated very well that the, and other members of the board have, that the common driveway probably fits this, this utilization from a conservation standpoint. It makes sense. The fire department has signed off. They're comfortable with it. So I think those pieces align very nice. I, I, I think that Larry started the conversation very well with if there's going to be an HOA to maintain with your guys' stormwater and BMPs, that there's going to be a spillover if there's something that goes wrong and then the town has to be responsible for that. So if there's going to be an HOA, it makes, makes sense that the HOA would be an HOA that would take care of that private cul-de-sac whose only function is to service those folks so that an HOA would be established. Makes sense to address that and for this way, I think that that also fits. The suggestion that the fire chief or that the DPW would direct you to say it's okay to have a cul-de-sac of a certain length, I have to correct you on. The bylaws are pretty specific. It says that a cul-de-sac are, you know, a certain length and that a wave would be required. So to suggest that the fire chief told you that would be okay, I think that's a manipulation to suggest that the DPW would say that it would be okay. I think that's a little bit of manipulation. You come before the planning board, the planning board, you make an application. We say it makes sense. It doesn't make sense. And that, I think that's where it needs to stay. And that's pretty, pretty well defined and clear to me. So now the question is, Larry raised the question, is it, is it of the public, is it the public interest to do this? And what I heard you say at our last meeting was that the reason you were doing this was because it was not profitable to just do three homes. And so we kind of looked at it and said, well, could you get four homes out of it with a 500 cul-de-sac? And it might be able to tweak four lots out of that. Because we've kind of looked at it a little bit because, yeah. So that's one consideration. And I'm not saying that we're going to throw your, the, the project of the wall. I just want to let you know that you're hearing from people that we have a little bit of problem with the length of the cul-de-sac. So that's just something to, to, to appreciate. But I think a private way would make your, 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 your project fly with an HOA. You've gotten the hurdle of a common drive. So I think just a fool's thought on, on, on a couple of things. Martha, do you have anything you want to pipe in on that or, or any follow-up thoughts on our waivers?
Not really. I mean, I think you've articulated, articulated it well, especially if they're going to, you know, go down the road of having an HOA for the BMPs. It would make sense to have an HOA to really, to keep this a private way. You know, especially given, given the, the number of waivers that are, are being requested.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John.
If I may, I just want a couple of comments and a, and a question. So I want to apologize if it was taken that what I was saying was manipulating what the fire chief or the DPW, Jim, said. What I was trying to explain is from day one, our original design was actually longer than 810 feet. The new design that came in, as you guys know, when we did the pair review, came in a little shorter at 810. The fire chief or the highway department, they know the zoning laws as well. They didn't have an issue with what we were showing them for the length of the road. And with the length of the road, the fire chief said, this is what I'd like in the cul-de-sac. I don't want anything in the center. This is where I want the fire hydrants. I want three of them. And this is how I want the lighting. And he did that with the length of the road that we had with not having an issue on the width of the road, the common driveway and the whole thing. Same thing with the highway department. So I don't want anyone to think, and if I said it wrong, I apologize, that the fire chief or DPW said, hey, we have, you know, do an 810 foot road. I, I don't want anyone to think that. I just want everyone to know that we brought that in from day one, that it was longer. It wasn't, it wasn't anything that was changed after the fact because we wanted to know what we had to do to make that safe in the town of Newbury. So I just want to clarify that and I again apologize if there was any confusion. My question is, I'm a little confused on what the board is telling me and I, I apologize if I'm a little slow with this. Is the board saying that you'd rather have a complete HOA, have the whole road private? The town's not going to plow it. Town's not going to do anything to it except send an emergency vehicle down if it was needed. It's a full HOA subdivision. Or are they saying they want an HOA like we were suggesting where all the BMPs and all that type of stuff is taken care of? And since the town would send emergency vehicles down there, the highway department would at least take care of the normal things that they do on a public way. I, I just need a little clarification on that.
But I'll, I'll help you. I think the, the second option that you presented. I think the, the second option that you presented is what you would like. I think the first option is what the planning board would feel most comfortable. Form an HOA. HOA takes care of everything.
Okay.
It's cleaner. It makes more sense. There's no, there's no splitting of hairs. You know, what, something backs up, who's going to be responsible for it? You know, this person doesn't cut the lawn, this guy does. Just HOA, take care of everything.
So now it comes back to, we would have no problem with that if that's the compromise that has to be made. I mean, are we completely happy with that? No, but if that's what we have to do, we, we have to do. But that also makes our subdivision even more expensive, which, which is fine, which makes it even more important for the five lots. So if we make it a complete HOA, does the wave wavering the waiver of the length become a little easier for public interest? For the board to be able to swallow it? Because I also don't think it's fair in my team and myself that we've been going all these months, going this route and the common driveway and all that. And then if we even had to consider changing the entire subdivision, and now we probably wouldn't even do a common driveway. Who knows? So anyway, that's, I guess I need a little clarification.
Well, you know, I guess this is part of doing development and having, bringing development plans to a board and a board telling you what makes sense or what fits or what doesn't fit. I mean, that's your business and you, you do your piece and we try to do our piece based upon what our guidelines are. And I think each town is different and you've probably come into that where some towns have certain lengths and certain configurations and other towns have different. And so we're just trying to go with our, what our, what our recommend, what our, what our guides are, what our marching orders are, what we're accountable to. Now, you know, every situation in life is compromised, right? Every situation in life is compromised. And I think we're, we're, we're having good discussions. You're making progress on what you're trying to achieve. And I think maybe some continued discussions are probably appropriate. I know that you're going to be going back with CONCOM, you know, to have some further discussions with them at the end of the month. So, you know, you've not been told that this is a non-starter or dead on arrival. I think you're negotiating your way through process.
There's, I agree with you 100%. There's no
John, now we're losing you. You've gone silent. You've got silence. Your volume is, your volume's way down, John.
Yeah, there's no volume.
We can't hear you, John.
Can't hear anything.
Did you cover the microphone by accident? Cause you moved your arm. You left out and it went quiet.
Can't hear you. Do you have a phone that you can call in on? And Martha, what's that dialing number? I don't have that in front of me.
Hold on a sec.
And when you call in, John, you're going to have to turn down your audio on your computer or your laptop because you'll get feedback even though it's not working. We're familiar with this. Right, George?
John, do you have the number?
Does he?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
And is that all right? No, no feedback?
No.
All right. Thank you. No, I, I completely agree. It's a process and you know, compromising and going through the system and everything. I, I guess my, you know, my last question is just, I'm a little bit out of standstill for the planning board meeting. I, I guess we need a little bit of some marching orders of what the planning board would like us to do or work on to come back to you again.
Well, let me, you know, I, if I may, Pete, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I, John, I don't want to leave you with the impression that I'm digging in my heels about the cul-de-sac length. I'm not. Okay. I'm just trying to understand, we as a board have to justify it. And I'm just looking at justify any waivers. I don't want you to abandon what you, your plan here. I, I just want you to think about the, the findings that we have to make. The, and I, and I'm just, I'm not an engineer, I'm a layman, but if we pulled that cul-de-sac back to the end of 108, that's probably going to increase the, the, the length of the driveways and maybe is, is going to even involve additional wetlands crossings, which maybe is not desirable. And maybe that's the type of thing you can justify the extension of the cul-de-sac on. I don't want to leave you with the impression that I'm digging in my heels or against it. Frankly, I, I, I kind of like what you're proposing here. Just, we just need to check off all the backs, all the boxes and dot the i's and cross the t's. So but I, I am very firm in my opinion that, that we should not be splitting the maintenance of the stormwater and the road between the town and homeowners association. I think it's got to be all one or the other. And where DPW has a problem with the, you know, with the BMPs, I, I think we, it really needs to be homeowners association for the whole thing. I don't see you on the screen. Did we lose him?
I'm, I'm, I'm here. I couldn't hear the last part.
Larry, I think you might need to repeat some of what you said, John.
Just the last part. I, I heard everything and appreciated what he said. I just didn't hear the very last part.
Oh, just, I, I just don't see that, that it's in anyone's interest to split the maintenance of the roadway and the maintenance of the stormwater facilities, the stormwater structures, the BMPs between a homeowners association and the town. I think it's, as I think Pete put it best, it's got to be one or the other. And it's, it would be a very difficult position to put the town in if we're trying to maintain the road and the homeowners association is not living up to its end of the, end of the bargain. So I, I really, I do have a strong opinion that the homeowners association needs to also take responsibility for the maintenance of the roadway.
Well, we would, as I mentioned earlier, and I appreciate everything that you've said. We, you know, if we have to, we have no problem making it a, a complete homeowners association, even taking care of the road. It would be helpful to us if, if we could keep the project the way it is. It, it would be a little easier to, to absorb that. I would like to throw out an idea through the chair. If it was going to be a complete HOA and now it's a private road, the sidewalk, because we didn't want to ask for another waiver, the sidewalk that we have there really leads to nowhere. There's no sidewalk on Main Street and I'm sure there's probably not going to be any in, in the near future. So one idea that we had, if we get away with the sidewalk, because it's a private way, and move the road a hair to the right, we could do at least a 10-foot buffer on the left-hand side of the wetlands, which would be very helpful. And Peter, his chair, might be able to help explain this because he was at the conservation. It would, it would give a, a nicer buffer on the left-hand side by the wetlands. And it could be really a win-win. We were just really afraid to, you know, ask for another waiver at the sidewalk. But now if it's going to be a complete private road, that might be a different situation. So I just wonder if I could get some feedback on that.
Well, you bring something interesting to the table. After being at conservation last night, and that was kind of a long meeting and probably it's good that I'm not seeing your face right now, John, because you probably are pulling out your hair. I think that might be beneficial, you know, from a constant, from conservation because they're trying to kind of help with the wetland boundaries because everything kind of buttons up either to a 25-foot, 50-foot, or 100-foot somewhere in this project. And it's kind of inevitable just because of the way the parcel is laid out. So this might be something that would be helpful from a conservation standpoint. And John makes a very, very good point. I don't think we have any sidewalks. Martha, do we have sidewalks on Main Street on the other side of the road? Weren't there sidewalks there?
I don't think so. Leslie?
They're way further down. They're closer down to the west Newbury side.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk that goes from, I believe it's Great Rock to, I don't know where it goes. It goes like, it goes by Caves. It dies somewhere in there.
Yeah, it ends right about there.
It actually, yeah, it was on both sides.
It's on one side.
Yeah, it's more developed on one side. Yeah, okay. Okay. So we don't have, we don't have sidewalks down by 108, Martha. And does it make sense to have a sidewalk go to a road that doesn't have sidewalks?
No, I think it's, yeah, I think it's a valid, a valid point. You know, it's, it's, it's serving five homes.
It's not a neighbor, it's not a large neighborhood. It's like, you know, 20, 30 people. It's, it is a cul-de-sac, so it's going to be not a through road. So John, I think you might have some flexibility with, with asking for that.
We, we appreciate that feedback. Ted Berry wanted to ask a question if that's all right?
Go ahead.
Sure, go, go ahead.
If the road is private and what the roadway provides is obviously legal access and legal frontage, the right-of-way in Newbury is 53 feet wide to create that legal right-of-way. Rights of way can vary depending upon, you know, the town, the city, and also the number of lots it services and so forth. So my question to you is, what would happen if the right-of-way for some reason was not 53 feet, but say 50 feet or 45 feet? Would that be something that could be entertained? So there's going to be a private way and it's not going to change any of the safety access to the, to the units? What it will allow us to do, if that's something that, that you would consider, it would allow me to shorten the road.
How much would it allow you to shorten the road?
I, I can't, I, I don't want to tell you that. There, there, there are a couple of things I can tell you right now. If we can eliminate the sidewalk, what I'm going to basically end up doing is offsetting the, the paved roadway so it doesn't go straight down the center of the right-of-way. And I'm going to push that roadway as you're going down the roadway, you know, over to the, to the right. I'm also going to do that at the end of the cul-de-sac. So the, the paved surface that you're going to drive down by just doing that is probably going to shorten the cul-de-sac 10 feet. And, but with a narrow right-of-way, I pick up more contiguous open space, which allows me to basically shorten that cul-de-sac. But I don't want to tell you how much because I don't know. I would be more than happy to come up with a concept and show that to you before, you know, we, you commit to anything or even say anything. I have no problem doing that. I'm just wondering if it's even worth me even trying to do that.
Well, hold on. Let me ask Martha her kind of, we would call this, we would call this a curbside consultant medicine. It really doesn't mean too much. It means you're just asking a question without, without jumping in too far into the management plan.
That what it's called?
Curbside. Don't hold me to it.
Just to be clear, there could be no, no discussion about it outside of the public hearing. So it's not like there can be a kind of a
No, this would have to be something submitted to you.
Right. Submitted and then distributed.
Correct.
Consideration.
Thank you for always keeping us in line.
You know, I just make two comments. One, to me, it would all be driven by, by public safety if the fire department's happy, DPW's happy. Well, DPW would be out of it, I guess, at that point. If the fire department and police are happy and, but what, what's that going to do with you? With the CONCOM? Are you going to have to refile?
No, because actually they were making suggestions of doing some manipulation of the road and changing its midline and getting rid of the sidewalks.
Oh, so it might
Could be a win-win.
Right. I guess, you know, I guess looking at it, my, my one concern would be if, if there's potential that the longer driveways would get even longer. So the common driveway as well as the driveway onto lot three, you know, whether there would be any public safety concerns about that. I mean, to me, in that fact, it sounds like, you know, it could be, I mean, certainly getting this farther away from the wetland because there's wetland encroachment. Or the right-of-way is encroaching on the wetland now as it, as it is. So mitigating that, I think is a plus.
What, what's going to end up, again, we're not saying that this is something that you're going to approve. I'm just asking is if we go, obviously eliminating the sidewalk and slotting the road over and all of that, that to me is a no-brainer. I, I recently did that, just so you know, I recently did that on another product that I worked on in, in, in Raleigh. So it, it's, it's not uncommon to do something like that. The, the right-of-way, which is again, I've done it before. Other towns and planning boards have entertained that based on the number of lots we're servicing and all of that type of stuff. And if you're, if you're willing to look at something that we put together, because obviously we have to show it to you and show it to, and have you review it and so forth. I'd put a plan together like that, highlighting the benefits and you can judge the, the detriments of the new plan. But obviously there'll be less pavement. The BMPs will work better. However, whatever we do is not going to change the safety and fire truck access that we've already done. I already know that that's going to work because we've already done the auto turn movements on it.
Can I make a suggestion, please?
Please, Mary.
Maybe John should put some of this in writing, send it off to us and we can continue the discussion because there's obviously a lot that we need to do. Just a thought.
Yes, why?
I think that's very, very good thought, Mary. So John, I think we've kind of made an advancement and progress in, in a different manner, which is beneficial in design and, and for conservation. So what I might encourage you to do is to get these thoughts to Martha. You know, feel comfortable with them, see if they, they fit. And if they fit well, you know, then, you know, tweak this a little bit. I, I see you've got your whole team there now. Hi, Bill. And we, we've changed the entire design of the plan bill. You're now making 14 affordable housing units. And the town wants to thank you very much for putting them into our inventory. I didn't think you got that. But anyways, I thought I'd try, you know. So I, I think we've, we've, we've made some, some interesting discuss points to pivot up, pivot up on. And bring these points to Martha, see if, if you're comfortable with them, see if she's comfortable with them. And then I think we discuss where, where they're at and you might have something different going to conservation in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Good. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful. So I would entertain. I thought we were going to lighten up next meeting. I thought we were going to lighten our next meeting.
No, it doesn't seem to be that way.
Doesn't seem to be that way. So I would entertain a motion to continue this to the, is it the nineteenth?
Well, the night, yeah, so then we, we have four that night, although it seems like some of them were drawing to a close.
Yeah, I think the other two should be pretty much. So, well, does that, does this give you enough time to rethink this thing?
Yes. Yes, we're going to have something for you. Yes, we'll absolutely have something for you.
And get it over to conservation too, so that everybody's on the same page.
It's going to go everywhere. Yeah.
Okay, all right, good. As that be the case, let's, I'd entertain a motion to continue this to the nineteenth of August, seven fifteen.
Motion to continue one oh eight, and straight to eight nineteen.
Thank you, second. Wonderful, wonderful. Any discussion on the motion? I don't see any discussion. Roll call, Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
False.
Woody?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes, indeed.
I'm glad you feel that way and I'm in favor as well. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate your, your, your discussion.
For all the time, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, guys, I want to kind of cruise through the rest of our agenda because I want to do this in like four minutes. Town planners report, are we all good with that, Martha?
Yeah, we're all.
Okay, board of selectmen, what do you got, Les?
Oh, boy.
Thirty seconds or less?
It was a little bit of a contentious meeting. They voted on chair and vice chair and clerk and talked about ethics hearings and they accepted donations.
Wonderful. And at the end of the day, the meeting was concluded.
Correct.
Excellent, excellent. ZBA?
Nothing new since, since our last meeting. Just the, the forty B is on for the twentieth.
Excellent.
Special hearing.
Excellent. Conservation, we had a torturous four and a half hour, four and forty-minute meeting, shoot me in the head. Oh, my gosh, I don't even remember what took place. Leslie was there?
I was at the party.
Yep, at, at the end of the day, things that needed to get addressed were addressed, then some things weren't addressed. And I think the things that are affecting us, we have just discussed. So I think those are the highlights from CONCOM. MVPC?
Nothing there off for the summer, but we do need to go backwards on the agenda. I'm sorry.
She did it, not me. Okay, okay, Martha, go ahead. What do you got?
So we do need to go back to, to the discussion of the preliminary plan for two seventeen to twenty-one. And when, when we want to get the applicant in to talk about that. And the other one is the, also, does the board have a sense of when it would like to open the public hearing on the Ale Prime Gas Station at twenty-three Central Street? And that's something that needs to be coordinated with town council in terms of timing.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest that we look on, on the first item that we look at that for the second of September. Does that look like a good target date? Because we should have two things freed up at our next meeting. We might have a continuation of our third item on the second, possibly. So would it be a good time for that submission?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I don't think it's, we're not going to be able to handle it at the next meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah, so the second. So Ale Prime, do we have any idea when council's going to be available or are they taking vacations or?
She, she actually is going to be able to let me know tomorrow. Right now, she thinks that the second is available. If the board would feel comfortable to tentatively say that we might do it that day if she's available. If not, if the board would feel comfortable with me working out a date, which would be after, sometime after the second. It just can't, because there's not, we don't have enough time for, for notification.
The second.
We do for the second. The second would work.
I think the second or the sixteenth.
She's not sure about the sixteenth. I think she may have a conflict.
You think we'd be able to get?
She'll let me know tomorrow.
Okay, do you think we'd be able to get the submission and prime and maybe one other thing in that, in for that evening?
I think so. I mean, prime would be opening, so if nothing else, we could have the initial presentation and, you know, call it a night.
Yep, because we wouldn't have much on public comment. So let's, let's go for the second. Let's see if council can do it. Everybody's still going to be in town. Nobody's traveling to the Bahamas. Mary, I saw you. I saw you smile. Okay, let's do it. Good. Anything else?
If she's not available, can I work with what her availability is after that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Your calendar is our calendar.
Well, I think she's, she's the key person, one key person in this. Okay?
Good, good, good. All right, I think we're done with our business, folks. I apologize. I apologize. We went forty-five minutes too late. I apologize. Yeah, fifteen minutes extra for each, for each hearing.
It's okay, it was productive.
Okay, good. Like productive. All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Great. And there's a second, there's a motion and a second. Larry, how do you say?
Say yes.
Great, George? All right, Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Yes, Mary?
Thank you.
And, and Pete?
Yes.
Don't have to always have water bottles that are bigger than your head.
My girls gave me this. Still for the wild. And then they autographed it, like Eve used to be here and then Fay used to be there, but my hand rubbed it out. All right, boys and girls, thank you very much. I appreciate all your help. Okay, be well, good night, guys.